Okay, good evening, everybody. I would like to call the the meeting of the Altadena Town Council for April 18, 2017 to order. The time is 7:06. Okay, leading our pledge of allegiance tonight will be members of the Citizenship Project Group from Altadena Four Edge Club. Unfortunately, some of them are not here, but we have the mentor, Melissa Connor, to help us with the pledge of allegiance for tonight. Is Melissa here? Okay, thank you. Okay, just a little thing. The Altadena Foothills Four Edge Club is in its first year as a community club in Los Angeles County. Within the club, various adults host projects. Citizenship group led by Ms. Melissa Connor meets monthly at the Altadena Library. One of Ms. Connor's primary goal is to introduce participants in governance and to help kids find their own meaningful ways to create change in our community. Again, thank you, Ms. Connor. Moving on, this roll call, that will be Recording Secretary, Councilmember Matthews.
Good evening, everyone. Council, please acknowledge your presence when your name is called, please. Ann Combe, here. Dean Cooper. Dean Cooper, ask an excuse.
I did not receive anything unless it came in late.
Okay. Nestor Delatorre.
Here.
Okori Izimi.
Present.
Damon Hobbie.
Present.
Ann Langson. Okay.
Excuse absence.
Okay, Jennifer Lee.
Here.
Billy Malone.
Present.
Diane Marcusson.
Here.
Myself, Judy Matthews, present. Brent Muffin.
Present.
Justin Robertson. Gloria Sanjica. Oh, okay, Gloria Sandica. Is it one of the same? Sanjica, okay. You are Gloria Sanjica?
Right.
Hello, Gloria. Patricia Sutherland.
Here.
Sylvia Vega.
Present.
And John White.
Present.
Okay, we have, we have one excused absence and one unexcused absence, and we have a form at 14.
Okay, thank you so much. The item 1.3, that will be the agenda. So I'll turn it over to the Vice Chair.
The agenda that's set before you, councilmembers, do we have anybody that's making any amendments to the agenda, or can we approve the agenda as it's set forth?
I'd like to add the Census Track announcement for Census Track 4603.02.
Okay, that'll be 7.2, 4602.
I'd also like to add a Census Track report for 4610.
Okay. That'll be 7.3, and that will be 4610 Census Track.
Anybody else? Any other amendments or corrections that you see on the agenda for tonight?
I'll just indicate that for Map Your Neighborhood, Karen Gibson, in her place it will be Eric Van der Is it Valdi? Okay. Van der, okay.
How do you spell that? Thank you. Anything else, councilmembers? With that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
Properly, motion properly moved, seconded by Councilwoman Sanjica. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, the Chairman's Report. I have a few things going on here, let me try to rush it. The Altadena Triangle, which is right to our east, there will be a permanent marquee clock, and I'm happy, I know I haven't spoken with all the town council members, but the number of individuals that say yes is more than 50% required. So my apologies, first of all, that I had some email issues, so you did not get it in a timely manner. But most, majority of the members of the town council would like to support the Altadena Triangle project. So there will be $500 coming from the town council. On the email that I circulated with the town council members, there's also another request. If you so choose, it is purely mandatory if you want to participate in additional fundraising. Okay. The proposed parking lot on El Molina, on behalf of Supervisor Berger, I'm pleased to inform the community that the Board of Supervisors United must be approved the parking lot project. Okay, the other thing I want to bring to the attention of the community is the Altadena, the Aldi officially opened on April, I believe it was 6th. And on April 20, there will be additional hiring event that will be taking place here at the community center. Okay. I also like the community to know that the Elliott Art Magnet invites the community to join Elliott Art Magnet for Metamorphosis, an evening of dance, music, visual arts, and theater, followed by open house. This will take place on Thursday, April 20, between 5:00 and 6:00 p.m. Okay, just one other thing. I'd like to get up and do this, get to the podium. I'd like Councilwoman Judy Matthews to come forth. Let's give her a round of applause. Judy is the recipient of Congresswoman Judy Chews Woman of the Year Award. So we want to congratulate her. We didn't want to leave her out, since she served the community, served our community very well. The Altadena Town Council also wanted to give her something to further remember the accomplishment and the achievement. So this is Judy, this is from the Altadena Town Council recognizes Judy Matthews as one of Congresswoman Judy Chews 2017 Women of the Year, with great appreciation of the outstanding service provided to the Altadena community. And is presented this day, well, we did present it at the event, it was the 8th day of April 2017. Congratulations.
Sometimes when people receive or acknowledge for things, they say, "Oh, I'm so happy I received this." I'm gonna say, this award, even though it's representing myself, I represent the entire council. So this is for everyone. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the Vice Chair's Report.
Good evening to the community. Thank you for coming out and supporting the Altadena Town Council on the issues before you. There are comment cards in the back. Did everybody get one of the comment cards? If you want to speak on one of the issues today, or you want to speak at the end of the Altadena Town Council meeting, please get a comment card in the back, fill it out, and please give it to one of the councilmembers, and you'll be given the appropriate time to speak on one of the issues. The Executive Committee meets on every second Tuesday of the month at 7:00. The Executive Committee consists of myself, Damon Hobbie, Judy Matthews, Mr. Billy Malone, Ms. Patricia Sutherland, and Mr. Okori Izimi. And we meet for the purposes of setting forth the agenda and discussing issues. The agenda that you have before you was set forth by the Executive Committee at the Executive Committee meeting, and that's the order of business that we'll proceed under. Additionally, if you'd like to be part of the agenda, or you'd like to be, to discuss an issue that needs to be put on the agenda, please contact one of the Executive Committee members on the Monday evening before the Tuesday meeting. So Monday evening by 5:00 o'clock on the second Monday of the, of the year, I mean, of the month. And additionally, councilmembers, this is for the councilmembers, if you have any updated information with respect to your contact information, emails, our phone numbers, please provide that to our corresponding secretary, Mr. Billy Malone, so that the community can get in touch with you and have accurate information.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Item 2.3, that will be Recording Secretary, and that'll be Councilwoman Judy Chews. I'm Judy Matthews. Judy Matthews.
Okay, thank you, Chairman. Council, you were provided the draft minutes of March 21st, 2017, with the response date of Monday, April 17th, for any comments. I received comments from Ann Combe, John White, and Gloria Sanjica. Sanjica? Ms. Gloria, okay. Ann suggested the following. Item 4.1, correct spelling of Altadenians, and it was corrected with the correct spelling of A-L-T-A-D-E-N-A-N-S. Item 4.2, date correction to read 2015 and 2016 in lieu of given date 2014. Item number 5.1.1, to include comments of Councilmember Sylvia Vega and Diane Marcusson that were part of council discussion. The comments are placed after a discussion is held and reads as follows. Councilmember Sylvia Vega asks that information be placed on the Altadena Town Council website for the community. Diane Marcusson encourages the community to be mindful of misinformation, and that correct information will be placed on the website. She further states that information is needed from the county that approves and explains the CSD update that pertains to fences and hedges. Item 4.2, Councilmember John White suggested the correction for Supervisor Karen Barker, and the last name is corrected to spell B-A-R-G-E-R, which I previously noted and corrected. Bar, yeah. Catherine, thank you, Diane. Okay, it's Catherine. Yeah, it's Catherine. Yeah. B-A-R-G-E-R. Okay. Item 7.2, Councilmember Gloria Sanjica, okay, has made a date correction to read May 18th, 2017, and May 19th, 2017, at 6:30 p.m. in lieu of the given date and time of April 20th, 2017, at 5:00 p.m. Thank you, Ann, John, and Gloria. Are there any other additions and corrections to the minutes? If not, I move, if not...
Are there any other additions?
Okay. I move the March 21st, 2017 meeting minutes as accepted, as amended.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded by Councilwoman Vega. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One abstention, because I wasn't present.
Okay. Any names? Okay, so one abstention. Okay, that we will take care of right this minute. Okay.
Sorry about that. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Okay, Treasurer, Councilwoman Sutherland.
Thank you. As of today, the balance in the town council account is $2,247.84. The increase was due to donations at the January meeting, or deposited $52. And that's all the information on the account. I would remind everybody that the council does operate on donations only. We are not funded by the county. And I'm going to send our can around, if you would assist. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, Public Safety Reports. Oh, never mind, hold on one moment, oversight or something. You're such a shut man, so I couldn't see. Okay, next one, that will be 2.5, and that is Correspondent Secretary's Report, Councilmember Billy Malone.
I'd like to make a couple of quick notes, that if any of the councilmen have any up-and-coming events, any town hall meetings, or anything that's happening in Census Track, please get it over to me in a PDF form, so I can post it on the website. And again, I'm gonna repeat what Chairman Okori mentioned, about any updated information, email, phone numbers, any updates whatsoever, please forward to me so we can update it on the website. I received a thank you letter, or we received a thank you letter, from Aldi's that opened recently. Chairman Okori was just touching on that, too. And I'm gonna read you the note that they sent. "On behalf of Aldi's, we thank you. We are thrilled that our Altadena store is now open, and we are excited to begin our partnership with the community. We look forward to bringing the Altadena area, customers a wide range of premium groceries, including a robust, fresh produce selection, organic offerings, USDA Choice meats, the Simple Nature line of products, free from over 125 artificial ingredients and preservatives. Live G-free, gluten-free product line, and more. We hope you and the community will take advantage of the simple, smarter shopping at Aldi's with high-quality exclusive brand products at prices that are up to 50%. For over 40 years, Aldi's have been a grocery store communities can count on or to consistently provide great quality products at low prices. We look forward to continuing that tradition in the Altadena area and beyond. Thank you again for your support. Sincerely, Paul Poruski, President of the Aldi Marina Valley Division." That was a thank you note. I just want to make one note. They have moved the community, and I'm reading a thank you to the community, that by no way an endorsement for many of us here on the town council, or trying to promote them over somebody else, but they are in a community, and we accept them with open arms.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, now the Public Safety, California Highway Patrol, that'll be Officer Mike Uyler.
Good evening, everybody, and I appreciate that pronunciation. You got it perfect. Council, thank you for having me. Everyone who's in attendance tonight, it's great to see so many people that care about their community show up and support. Traffic collisions for the month of March are the following. There were 26 property damage-only traffic collisions. Five of those traffic collisions involved injury. The leading causes were unsafe speed and right-of-way violations at intersections. So I encourage everyone to drive at a safe and prudent speed. And before you proceed through intersections, make sure it's clear both ways before you cross. Citations issued throughout the area were numbered 54, and those were stop sign violations, unsafe speed, and increase in seatbelt, and distracted driver citations. So please stay off your cellphone. There were no fatalities, which is great to hear, is normal. There were two unrelated DUI arrests. So people take advantage of the things that are out there nowadays, Uber, Lyft, whatever. Think before you drink. And keeping pace with Ms. Marcusson's request on my activities throughout the Altadena area, because I am dedicated solely to the Altadena area, throughout the month, I conducted 93 enforcement stops. Of those enforcement stops, 77 traffic citations were issued, and there were another 14 verbal warnings issued. And that concludes my report, but tonight we have a special guest. A new commander has reported to the Altadena area, and his name is Captain Holguin.
Thank you. Thank you, and good evening. Pleasure to be here and meet all the councilmembers and all the community. This is very impressive. This is very impressive. Good turnout, it's good to see that the community is very involved. So I just want to take a couple of brief moments. My name is Jesse Holguin, and I have the honor of being the captain of the Altadena Area Office. As you may know, our office covers a very large jurisdiction. This is one of them. But we're very dedicated to the community. All of them that we serve work in conjunction with their partners in the Sheriff's Department, providing the highest level of safety, service, and security. So if you have any issues, questions, problems, concerns, or compliments, we're available for that as well. I'll be, I'll stay to the end of the meeting, and if you have any issues, or if we want to talk further, I'd be willing, but I don't want to take any more time, since I wasn't on the agenda. So it's a pleasure to meet everyone, and I look forward to working with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and welcome. At the Altadena Sheriff's Station, Lieutenant Carmichael Octave.
Good evening to all. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the council. I'm Lieutenant Carmichael Octave. I'm Lieutenant, assigned Altadena Station, under the direction of Captain Stuckey. Along with, also in the audience is our operations lieutenant, Lieutenant Clay. I'm gonna talk briefly about our Part 1 crimes. Well, when we mention Part 1 crimes, that is a combination of our violent crimes versus our property crimes. I'm happy to say that over a five-year period, our overall violent crimes are down by 67%, and since last year, 44%. Our property crimes are actually up slightly, but that's up county-wide. Since last year, we're up by 23%, but over a five-year period, we are down by 16%. Now, for the, for the town of Altadena, our, we've had an increase from February to March. There's no way to directly correlate that. When there's, when the weather's a little bit cooler, that does make a slight difference, but it does not stop our efforts to fight crime. So there is a slight increase from last month to this month. I'm happy to say that there were zero rapes for the month of March. There were zero robbery weapons. We did, however, have two strong robberies. Those were both shoplifting-related, and we did get a suspect in custody behind that. Our aggravated assaults remained at two. I'm happy to say that we had no domestic violence assaults. Our residential burglaries did increase from three to 13. Now, whatever we know is a trend, what we do is we go to briefings, and we deploy our resources accordingly to ensure that we're mitigating and mitigating the crime. And it's like I always say, we can't do it alone, it's law enforcement. So I do encourage you, when you see something, please say something, and we'll all work together to make sure that we're successful in fighting crimes. Our overall larceny thefts have increased from 14 to 22. This includes our vehicle thefts, and are actually thefts from vehicles. And I'll go into some of the things that we can do, and that we recommend to mitigate that. Census Track 4601, we had an increase in overall crime, and that was mainly due to our increase in residential burglaries. Okay, Census Track 4602, we also had a slight increase, and that went from three to five. And that most, was most notable in the area of our larcenies, as I mentioned earlier. Census Track 4603.1, it remained the same at four. We did have an aggravated assault, and we got a suspect in custody in regards to that. Census Track 4603.2, it increased slightly from four to five. Census Track 4610, we had an increase from seven to 12 overall crimes. There was, however, a slight decrease in grand and petty larcenies. It decreased from three to one, and we also had zero residential burglaries in that particular Census Track. Census Track 4611, we had an overall increase from four to seven. And again, that was mainly due to our increase in overall larceny thefts. Census Track 4612, there was a slight increase from two to seven, and that was also due to our increase in larceny thefts. And lastly, Census Track 4613, we had an increase from five to nine, and that also was due to an increase in our larcenies. I'd like to point out that this month, we as the Sheriff's Department do recognize this is Distracted Drivers Month. So our message to the public is, before you send that text or make that call, just know that it can wait. It may save someone's life. Any questions?
Not really a question, but I just wanted to let the council know that the, your report, for some reason, I did not realize that it did not get to everybody. So that's probably the reason why you did not get feedback prior to tonight. So, and council, you already know what is going on with the email issues, so I expect you to be patient with me until we have it resolved. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any questions from council? Okay, so I'm going to start from here. None from, okay, Councilmember Muffin.
So looking at 4610, there's a significant increase from last month, and we look like we're at the top end of the bell curve. Could you maybe shed some light on maybe what's going on? Is there something in particular going on in 4610 besides the usual?
There's no trends or patterns. There is one particular location that we have focused on, myself and the detectives, and we're gonna do what we can to saturate that area and mitigate the crime in that area. There are no particular trends or patterns, or anything that we can attribute directly to that. We, we just, again, I can't reiterate enough, we have a lot of thefts from unlocked vehicles, and we also have a lot of situations where individuals are leaving their property, their belongings on the scene in plain view. So definitely the public can help us by securing those items in a trunk, and also with packaged thefts as well. Try to make sure that during the delivery, either your home, or you can have them leave it with a neighbor. But there are no direct trends or patterns to attribute to 4610.
These vehicle burglaries, are they from the 24-hour parking lot that had the problems in the past?
Some are from there, and it's an active, ongoing investigation, but we are making strides.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Councilmember White.
Yes, in 4601, month-to-month, we've seen an uptick in crime, specifically residential burglaries. You said there were no trends or patterns. What constitutes those residential burglaries? Is that packages, or is that breaking and entering?
The majority of the rise in the Part 1 crimes, or the thefts in 4601 this month, specifically, were due to the increase in vehicle burglaries. They went from one to six, and a lot of times that's due to, again, the watchful eye of the police. And a lot of times, that's due to, again, the watchful eye of the public in addition to our saturation patrol. But please do not leave items on the scene in plain view. And what constitutes a vehicle burglary versus a petty theft would be the vehicle's locked. So the most common method would be shattering windows. So when a suspect is walking by and he's looking to steal items, he's not going to let a window stop him from getting into that particular vehicle. And again, you can just mitigate that or assist us with those efforts by securing those items in an unseen area.
My concern is with the residential burglaries. And I'm wondering, is there some reason forty-six oh one has had an increase in the number of residential burglaries? As I mentioned, you said there were no trends or patterns, but are these breaking and entering? Or are these just packages being stolen off front porches?
Yeah, no, now, if it was a package stolen from a porch, then that would be outside. Burglary is basically you enter a four-sided structure with the intent to commit grand or petty larceny. So with these burglaries, the main actual method of entry would be like shattering the patio door and things along those lines. So that's just, there's no clue or anything that we've identified. So there's no pattern that we can identify that with.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, ma'am.
More of the houses where they don't see the ADT sign or something? Are they breaking in houses that have the burglar alarms?
It would help to have those signs, but a lot of times, it's just individuals casing the area. So that's why it's so important that if you see someone that you don't recognize from the neighborhood, don't hesitate to call the station, and we'll get some units out there. And we'll definitely saturate the area. No matter what time, day or night, someone will always answer the phone and get someone out there to you.
But what I'm asking is, the houses that are being broken into, are they the ones, you know, how, when you do have an alarm system, you have the ADT sign or, you know, out in front of your yard? Are the houses that are being broken into, houses that do not have alarms or a notification that there's alarm or something like that? Are they breaking in houses that have an alarm, and then you guys hear the alarm and you come?
Some of the houses, we do respond if we get an alarm. So some have alarms, some don't. But a lot of times, it's not just the alarm. You can have an alarm in the house, but if you don't have a motion sensor on all the doors, then the alarm is actually not going to go off. So the best protection against that is to put those signs out there, just so it's seen, and then keep the watchful eye.
Okay, any additional questions?
I just have one question. Is there any update with respect to the buyback on the gun program? The updates on that? I know you're working on that.
We are working on that, absolutely. We're working on that.
Just wondering if there's any updates.
And that's kind of one of the reasons also that I covered the aspect of the violent crime. And knock on wood, we've been really, really blessed this year. And we haven't had any type of an uptick in that. But we are actively working on putting together a gun buyback program.
Okay, I appreciate it, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much for the report. All right, Surt, do we have... Deputy Dan Page now, okay. Map Your Neighborhood, that will be Eric Van Valde. Are you Surt? No, we're not there yet.
My name is Eric Van Valde. I want to thank the town council for inviting us to speak here tonight and be in attendance. And I want to thank everybody in the community for being here, hearing what I'm going to speak about tonight, disaster preparedness. Just a little personal information, I am an Altadena resident for sixteen years now and live at ten fifty-nine New York Drive.
So can you speak into the microphone?
Okay. For the tall guy. Okay, so Altadena resident for sixteen years now. I'm a geologist. I've worked in the water industry for thirty years here in the L.A. area. So I know a little bit about what is to be prepared for a disaster. Earthquake, you know, is probably one of our number-one disasters that we're kind of tracking and everything. But there are other disasters that we need to be prepared for. So I became, I became interested in this. I went through Surt training and know Deputy Dan Page very well. And went through Surt training and became also a licensed amateur radio operator. These are really important tools for disaster preparedness. The Map Your Neighborhood program is a program that is also very important. It is a program that I think everybody, young and old, in the communities and neighborhoods can come together and, you know, just be prepared as a community. So I would assume most of you, you know, most of the committee is familiar with the Map Your Neighborhood program. But for those, the benefit of anyone that is not, Map Your Neighborhood teaches the nine steps to take immediately following a disaster. The first six steps are what you do personally for you and your family. And then the next three steps are reaching out to your neighborhood to come together and to help each other, you know, in the case of anybody who's hurt, your property's damaged, you know, people that need help and assistance. Since we've been tracking Map Your Neighborhood since 2015, we have completed nine community facilitator trainings. We'd like to acknowledge the Altadena Town and Country Club. They've been a wonderful help. They've provided their facility to us and promoting the community. So we do trainings there. I've handed out to all of you. We have four more trainings this year, and there's some more fires on the back. So if anybody is interested, please grab one. So trainings are also held, have been held at Loma Alta Park and also Teckan Cultural Association. So to date, two hundred and thirty-one Map Your Neighborhood facilitators have been attended and completed the training. We're tracking a hundred and four additional Altadena residents who are interested in upcoming facilitator trainings. So the additional community facilitator trainings are May twenty-first, July sixteenth, and September seventeenth at Altadena Town and Country Club. And those are Sunday afternoons from four to six-thirty P.M. We have one more that we have just recently planned, that's on November twelfth, that's at the Metropolitan Baptist Church. So there'll be additional fires coming up for that. So we're also interested in exploring any other homeowners' associations or any church communities that would like to bring us in to provide this training. So we provide the training for the facilitators. And then the facilitators can go out into their community, and they can bring their neighborhoods together. We'll come, we'll help you prepare for the training, we'll help you facilitate the training also. So we're there to kind of help you through all that's necessary. So in addition to the facilitator trainings, we've presented disaster preparedness overviews at Church of Christ in Kinnaloa Mesa, Loma Alta Park, St. Elizabeth's Census Track, Altadena Girl Scout Leaders Meetings, Kinnaloa Mesa Homeowner Association, ACTS, several Second Saturdays at the Altadena Library, and now to the esteemed town council, thank you very much. So just to give you an overview of some of our numbers and what we're after here is that thirty-three facilitators have completed their first Map Your Neighborhood meeting for their neighborhood group. Ten facilitators have completed their second meeting. So you have, you start with the first meeting, and then three months after that, six months after that, you do a second meeting, and then after that, you just kind of keep, you know, keep up with your neighbors and bring more people in as you grow. So there's five facilitators have Map Your Neighborhoods set to date. Fifteen facilitators are in the process of setting their dates. And thirty-two additional have interest in doing the facilitator training. So just to sum up, our community goal is to reach ten percent of the fifteen thousand five hundred and twenty households here in Altadena by the end of 2018. To date, we have four-point-two percent of our goal met. So that's like six hundred and thirty-nine households that have completed their training. So I think it's very important for everybody to recognize the fact that, you know, the difference between a disaster and emergency is that in a disaster, emergency services are not going to be available. They're going to be busy, they're going to be overwhelmed with the big-picture items. And it's going to be up to us as a community, you know, to come together. And this is a great way to get to know your neighbors and just promote being prepared. It's a comfort factor.
Okay, thank you so much. We appreciate the report. Any questions from council?
I have, just a quick, if you have this flyer in a PDF form, if you could send it over to me so I can post it online.
Yeah, sure.
My email is billy.malone@towncouncil.org. AltadenaTownCouncil.org. AltadenaTownCouncil.org.
I'm sorry. Okay, again, thank you so much for the presentation. And moving on to item three point five, and that will be L.A. County Fire. And that will be Battalion Chief Bob Haskell.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Town Council. My name is Bob Haskell. I'm Battalion Chief with L.A. County Fire Department for this area. For the March Activity Report, we have a total of, we had a total of three fires, two hundred and seventy-nine medical calls, twelve service calls. We didn't have any hazardous materials calls, which is good. Six hazardous conditions, and thirty-seven good-intent calls. Now, out of the two hundred and seventy-nine medical calls, I'll go over some of the larger numbers because there's quite a few of them. But we had ten abdominal pains, ten psychological calls, twelve bleeding, twenty-seven chest pains, ten strokes, thirty-seven difficult breathers, thirty-three major trauma injuries, forty-two sick people, general sickness, twelve public assists, and that could be, most of the time, it's helping somebody back to bed, eleven seizures, seven traffic collisions, and twenty-four people unconscious. Now, out of the two hundred and seventy-nine that we're seeing, a hundred and four of them were... Well, out of that, two hundred and thirty-one were transported to local hospitals. Out of the two hundred and thirty-one, a hundred and four were transported with our paramedics, our advanced life support. And then a hundred and twenty-seven were advanced with basic life support, our EMTs. And the three fires I talked about, one was a trash fire, one was a cooking fire, one was a vehicle fire. Total property loss was fifteen thousand dollars, the car, and then a hundred dollars, loss of contents. And the hazardous conditions, we had six of those, and they were either defective wiring or power lines down. And then, I don't know if I mentioned last month, we have, as of April first, Battalion Chief Mark Whaling is new to the area. He's here on the A shift, so he is Battalion Four, A shift. And we did have an intrapire that'll be on next month's report. I happened to be on the fire, and it was, unfortunately, it was Easter Sunday at five o'clock in the morning. And we did make window notifications. But we got the call roughly about five A.M., and it was still dark. And it was a small house, maybe less than a thousand square feet, and it was fully involved. And we were expecting quite a challenge. It was difficult to get in the front door because there was a lot of material in the house. Materials stacked very high throughout the house, and it was hard to get into the house. And it's difficult for us to do a primary search in that type of environment. Fortunately, there was two people that lived there, a seventy-five-year-old woman and her thirty-five-year-old grandson. When we got on scene, the house was fully involved. It was a small house, but because of all the material inside, we were expect, we have to expect the worst. And so we got in, started knocking the fire down, did our primary search. And fortunately, the seventy-five-year-old woman was able to exit the rear of the house, through the kitchen door. And then her grandson was able to exit out of his bedroom window. So everything came out pretty... To mention that because although she was up at five o'clock in the morning and knew how the fire started, the smoke detectors activated. And she started screaming and yelling, but the grant also heard the smoke detectors activate. And so that was a big plus. Anyways, I just, and that'll be in next month's report, but I just let you know about that. And that was over on... Cacitas and hair... And then, to follow just a little bit on that... Hello? Hello? Okay. I better talk quick. L.A. County Fire Department has what we call these save cards, and they're a hundred dollars. And it may not be much, but when you don't have anything, I mean, that house burned down. They didn't have clothes, food, they didn't have anything. So in a fire of that sort that's destructive, we have these cards that are a hundred dollars. So that at least will get them a couple hours. And then in addition to that, we contacted the Red Cross, and their Red Cross really comes through in these times of need. They came in and they gave them clothes, money, and they had a place to live. But they're going to follow through and help them as much as they can. Any questions?
How did the fire start?
Candle, candle in the living room. It was accidental. And I don't believe there was any insurance. We're really hoping on the Red Cross to help just as much as they can. The woman did have a niece that lived in the area, so she was there helping out. But it was just sad, Easter morning. You know, but the good thing is, it was a bad fire, but nobody got hurt. And in a fire like that, bad things happen. Any other questions?
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, have a good evening.
Special presentation, introduction, community business work. This will be the field rep for Senator Portentino, and that will be Dominic Corey.
Yes. Good evening, council and guests. My name is Dominic Corey. I am the district representative for Senator Anthony Portentino. I've been working with him for the last two months, and I will be covering the Altadena Pasadena area. So you guys will see me a lot around the community. The senator would like to do a business walk. So I will be reaching out to you, Mr. Malone, to kind of find a business area, and we will go from there. It will be in the second week of June. So I will work with you on those dates, and he actually, the senator... I do, I do. And the senator would like to do a senior scam stopper. So I don't know who I will work with on that, probably somebody from this place. But I just want everybody in the audience to see my face. If you see me in the community, speak to me if you have any questions, anything that I could do to help out or to be there for support, I will be there. Once again, my name is Dominic Corey.
Any questions? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry. If you could give your contact information to somebody at Billy or whoever at the ATC that can get it out to all of us and also maybe post it on the website. And Billy, I would just like to request that maybe we don't go to just the commercial district and maybe look at some of the other ones. and maybe look at some of the other ones, yeah. Right, yep. And the south side, and the middle side.
Well, I have to say, if you know the senator, he is a very outgoing person. And he will be all over Altadena. It's already on our calendar to be at the big library, fiftieth event that they're having, which he will be there. You will see us around, I promise you that. You will see us around.
Okay, more questions from?
What was the second event? You mentioned, you mentioned the business walk, and then you mentioned the second.
A senior scam stopper. Yeah, we want to do a senior scam stopper.
Same period in June?
I will work on that, probably a little bit later. June is a busy month for Altadena with the library, so.
Okay, any more questions from council? Thank you so much, Dominic.
Thank you, thank you guys.
You're welcome. Okay, Land Use Committee, this will be an action item. Let me turn it over to the Land Use Chair, Councilwoman Marcus.
Okay, so I have some information first for everybody, and then I wanted to get on the, on the record. And Judy, I'll get this to you separately. So with the fences and hedges, I know there have been a lot of questions, and we were able to find out from regional planning, some contact information, that if you have questions about your own property that you can contact. So if you want to find out how much of the highway dedication is for their property, you can call six two six four five eight four nine two one and ask to speak to someone from the road section, and they'll be able to help you figure out where your highway line is and probably where the right-of-way ends and all of that. That's been a big question, so we did get a contact for that. Also, if you want to go to a public counter to talk to them about it, you can go to nine hundred South Fremont Avenue in Alhambra, the third floor land development public counter. It's open from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Thursday. The zip code there is nine one eight oh three if you need it. So I did want to pass that information along to everybody. I know that's been a question we haven't really been able to answer. Okay. I have some comments that I'm gonna make, and then, do we have all the comment cards up here for this matter? If we don't, then please bring them up, because we need to, yeah, we need to figure out who all, who all wants to speak. Yeah, just give them to Judy, that's fine. Okay. Okay, so I'm gonna make a few comments, and then we will take, take public comment, and then we'll take questions from the town council finally. I did want to go over real quickly, just with certain highlights. I did put a lot of papers at the back of the room on, probably not enough for this group, but on the back on the piano. And I did want to point out, I'm gonna mention a couple of things in my comments. I wanted to, on the diagram here that shows the driveway zone with a sidewalk, the road right-of-way line and the highway line are extremely deceptive. And for the purposes of the discussion tonight, I'm gonna assume that the highway line or the road right-of-way is back down where the sidewalk ends, where it says the back of the sidewalk, not that whole big long high thing, okay? That the, yeah, it's along the sidewalk. Just to point out to everybody, if you have a driveway zone without a sidewalk, so if your house does not have a sidewalk in front of it, the code says that you have to have a two-and-a-half-foot clearance for people to get out of the car from where a fence or hedge is. So you see that the road right-of-way line is probably down where it looks like where the sidewalk was on the other one. And then that, the, from where the asphalt is where people park, there needs to be a two-and-a-half-foot buffer back on that so that people can safely get in and out of the car on the side where the land is. And then finally, just to notice, I do have one for a corner lot. And the challenge with the corner lot is being able to see around the corner. We have a good example of that at New York Drive and Altadena Drive. If you're coming west on New York Drive and you're trying to make a right onto Altadena Drive to go north, we've had a number of people that have been frightened trying to cross the street because the cars come zooming around, and there's not great visibility. So, okay, we will be available, I will be available for questions. I also have here with us tonight David McDonald, who is the Senior Regional Planner with the Community Studies North Section for Department of Regional Planning. He's somewhere in the room?
He's right back here.
Oh, okay. So, he's hiding from me. Okay. So he'll be here should we need, David, do you want to come? Oh, there's not a, do you want to sort of come more forward in case somebody has a question? We need you on a microphone? He's not scared. He offered to come. He offered to come. So I guess if we need you, David, we'll call you. Okay. So, so I just wanted to make a brief statement. The county has placed a moratorium on the enforcement of fences and hedges, as we all know, for decades in Altadena. And we're now faced with a decision to make so that we can provide a recommendation to Supervisor Barker on what direction we'd like to take as they move forward with the finalization of the CSD and the reinstatement of enforcement. As part of the feedback process, the community provided comment opportunities, the community offered, I'm sorry, public comment opportunities to the county at two Regional Planning Commission meetings and one county open house. In addition, many residents sent emails to the county. Finally, Altadena Town Council members have looked at social media websites, received emails from residents, had conversations with residents, and tallied public comment at the April Land Use Committee meeting. We will also public, tally the public comment from tonight. You'll not be surprised to hear that in our divided community, the tally before, the tally up until the October meeting was fifty-two residents in support of the changes to fences and hedges as outlined in the CSD revision, and forty-seven residents indicated that they would settle for no less than grandfathering in all fences and hedges in Altadena. At that October meeting, the Regional Planning Commission saw our division and mentioned that it would be good if we took one more look. As a result, the county has offered some alternative language for this section of the CSD, fences and hedges, and this is for our consideration only and not binding. This is not the county telling us what we're gonna have. This is them saying, hey, you know, look at this too. In the course of evaluation of the alternative language, it appears as if the Department of Public Works is amenable to move the lines from which distances are measured closer to the street in some cases. This will also allow walls to be placed up against a sidewalk in some cases, most cases, I guess. So if you look at your document, you compare the two, the old CSD said that they would measure from the highway line. If you look at your diagrams, you will see that regardless of where the highway line is on these diagrams, it's closer to the house than the road right-of-way. And so the new recommendation or the new idea or the new offering that they've given us is to change the word highway line to road right-of-way. So the road right-of-way, if they're measuring from that, is much closer to the street, and so your setbacks will be closer to the street and not as far back in your yard. So this allows walls to be placed up against the sidewalk in most cases. The assumption is that this will allow more fences to become legal, with the more illegal fences to become legal, with the exception of having the driveway zone, which probably does not exist in currently illegal hedges and will be required for all that the county has called out to look at. In the original CSD recommendation approved by Regional Planning Commission, it states that fences less than ten feet from the start of the driveway zone and over three-and-a-half feet to six feet should be open and non-view obscuring for any portion of the fence over three-and-a-half feet. Further back, they can be solid if they're ten feet back. This was because of the indication that this would be the best compromise to allow six-feet hedges while not building bunkers and risking losing the character of the Altadena community. The alternative language document reads as if fences less than ten feet from the sidewalk on either line could be a solid wall. However, this is not keeping with the original CSD approval. So the community, the committee, everybody, when the CSD went through in the first place, said, "We'd like to have six-and-a-half-feet walls in our front yard closer to the sidewalk, but we want them only to be three-and-a-half feet solid with two-and-a-half feet above to six feet to have it be non-view obscuring." So that part of the, of the language in this document, we would recommend not to have solid walls. In addition, to the fifty-two residents already approving the non-view obscuring walls, the ATC gathered support for this aspect of the project from forty-six additional residents for a total of ninety-eight residents in support of the non-view obscuring six-foot walls. I have a section in here to talk about hedges, but what I'd like to do is have everybody, you now have the old document and the new document, you all have that as well. And I think that the, with the exception of where they're measured back from, they are the same on both the public works, well, what I think that we in the, and the CSD committee recommend is to have it like the original CSD is listed. So I'd like everybody just to become familiar with that piece for hedges. And the recommendation would be that the hedges section be kept as it is in the CSD that went to, it's the page that you have that says, "As approved by Regional Planning." In the spirit of compromise, I would like, this is to all you guys, in the spirit of compromise, I would like to suggest that we recommend to the supervisor's office that we will agree to changing the reference to road right-of-way from highway line where appropriate. This will move the line from the houses, further from the houses in some cases. In addition, I'd like to suggest that six-foot fences that are not ten feet back from the corresponding line, and I'm not gonna get, we'll figure, they'll help us with the corresponding line, be open and non-view obscuring for any portion of the fence that's over three-and-a-half feet, and that they can be located up against a sidewalk where there is a sidewalk and beyond the clear zone where there is not a sidewalk. In all cases, the driveway zone will apply for safety reasons. And in addition, then I would recommend that we request that Regional Planning and the Department of Public Works submit a final document to us for approval before it goes to the board so that we see that they've captured our recommendation accurately and have one more opportunity to review. So I want to bring people up for public comment, but I wanted to see if anybody has a question about that. Basically, what I'm saying is, let's put together a compromise view of this, putting together the two versions, the CSD version that went to the Regional Planning Commission, and then also the alternate language document, if that, because in some cases that loosens up the requirements a bit. Send that down to the Regional Planning Commission, not the commission, sorry, the Regional Planning Department, and then have them, you know, send it back to us like in a real document that we can say, here's, here's what the recommendations are. So anyway, we can, we can have public comment now if you want to do it.
Before we do that, what I'd like to see is a dialogue, if any, amongst the council members, and then we'll open it up to the community. And I would also like to see anybody who would like to make a comment, do it now so that we're not here all night. So whatever we have here, that's what we're going to be using. I'd like to know the numbers so that we can either amend the number of minutes.
What he's saying is, if you haven't given us the card, you need to give it to us now.
I would like to get it at this moment.
Yeah. Okay, so, so what I do want to do is, as we did on the Land Use Committee meeting, many of you were on that committee, is that after we had public comment, because we don't respond to public comment, if there are questions that you hear that you think are important or that David McDonald can answer for us, we want to be able to ask those questions so that we don't, you know, so that if they're, we can, we can ask the questions and then have him answer them, so we don't get into a big discussion because we don't respond to public comment. Okay.
And also, we have a lot of public comments here, nineteen, and so we want to exercise some decorum here. Everybody has a different view on certain things. We don't want to scream at anybody or make any outrageous noises. We want to be peaceful and have a good dialogue here. You'll be given two minutes for your public comment. So when you get up there, please state your name and your address for the record so we know where you live, and then give your public comment. Two minutes does go fast.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'll give you a cue kind of when you get down to.
I called up like four people at once, and then they stood, yeah, then they get up there.
Yes, if, any discussion amongst the council members? Anybody has any question or discussion on this matter?
I have a question, just to confirm. Is it true that you cannot have a see-through six-foot fence within the driveway zone?
Yes, right, the driveway zone, not within the, you can't have anything over forty-two inches within the driveway zone.
Even if it's, even if it's see-through?
Yes, that's correct. And that is in the picture here. You can see where the driveway zone is in each one of these examples. And it's ten feet back from some line. It's a different line depending upon how your property is. Okay, so, okay, anybody else?
Okay, we have twenty-one comment cards. And because the vice chair has already said a two minutes, we will go ahead and do two minutes. I was going to bring it down to one and a half, but two minutes, two minutes, please.
So first, we have, I'm gonna call up four people, and if you can line up, and then the next person speak. The first person speak, and then the other ones can come, so that we can do this kind of quickly. Ms. Janine, if I mispronounce your name, please forgive me. Ms. Janine Benicor? Mr. Stephen Tepey? Ms. Sandra Faulkner? And Mr. John Schreiberner? And if you could speak in the order I called your names?
Sorry, can you hear me? Okay, Jenny Vanacor. I live at twenty-six forty-four North Altadena Drive. And I just object to, you know, the whole process, but I just would like to have everything that is already in place grandfathered in. I live in a property that, we have two houses on a lot. It was the Mount Wilson Toll House. And if I had to take part of my hedges down in the first, the house that's on the street, it would leave the house almost in danger because it's right on Altadena Drive. Part of the hedge actually kind of protects, it has a little rock wall. And it's right at the, basically right where, you know, the street is. So there would be no way to put it back ten feet, and I think that would be hard. And I've, you know, we've lived there for seventeen years, and it's been that way. So I just would request that it be grandfathered in.
Right, so let me just take this example. I know we're not gonna respond to public comment, but I really want to make sure everybody understands this. Number one, the county in no way, shape, or form ever, these rules have been in place for, since the twenties. They do not drive around and find your hedge. Once the, once the rules go in, the only way that the county's gonna say anything to you is if somebody complains about your fence. If you've lived in your house for fifty years and nobody's complained about your fence, then honestly, it will be somebody who is just being mean, driving around and reporting people, okay? I'm just saying, I'm just saying, that's, that is a possibility, and we need to get, go into this in a really positive way, right? Once the, once the rules, by the way, I think that your fence, if somebody complained about it, it sounds to me as if your fence or hedge would probably be okay without the driveway zone. The county will make you put the driveway zone in if somebody complains. But what's up against the street will be allowed to stay up against the street, okay? Depending upon where that line is, guys, so don't, you know, I don't know your address, whatever. What I'm trying to say is, everybody's different, and don't assume, I know there's been some information out there that you're gonna be in violation. Don't assume that that's. information out there that you're going to be in violation, don't assume that's not from the county, by the way, that document is not from the county, although it looks sort of like maybe it is. So I just, let's go into this discussion tonight with some understanding that nobody's going to, the minute it goes into effect, you could go another 40 years before somebody says something to you, okay?
Right, right, but I have been to the...
I understand. And by the way, the county is not going to grandfather in every fence in the community. That's just not an option. I'm sorry. You know, I truly am sorry, but that's not one of the things that's on the table, and they've been very clear about that. So I have, we marked down your comment, and thank you very much, I'm not going to say anything else, sorry, guys. I hope that helped a little, though.
Hello, my name is Steve Haeckel, and our family trust owns about seven properties in Altadena, and we just would like to comment on the costs associated with the process of doing this, that perhaps there could be a moratorium or some type of outreach from the county, that they could create an architectural meeting and waive fees for working with the city for a period of time to make this happen. Also, I, in general, oppose the idea of this whole setbacks and proposal from a number of professional and opinion standpoints, but I don't want to take up town council's time with that. Also, I questioned the survey where it states that there is 49 to 52, or, excuse me, 48 to 52 as being accurate, because we did not receive much information on this until this evening. Thank you.
Well, we're counting tonight, too. So all that was prior to tonight.
Okay.
Yeah, so we'll take everybody into account tonight, too.
Hi, my name is Sandra Faulkner, and I live at 51 La Bonanza Court in Altadena. I also would like, wanted to make comment on how we get our opposed numbers up, as he did as well. On my block, there's approximately 25 homes, the lots are approximately 4,000 feet, square feet, the lot, not the home. The homes are approximately 1,000 square feet each. The setbacks that you have will actually, on some of the homes, go into their home because of how they were built. So if you don't want, you want it 42 inches, are you going to take out their front wall? So this is a bit of a thing that I'm hoping they're going to take into consideration. In my neighborhood, I have six fences that are absolutely beautiful, do not meet regulation. I would hate to see them come down. They beautify the neighborhood, and they add value to our street. I would also like to see that there is some sort of, if this does go through and our opinions are not taken into consideration, I would like to see some sort of help for those who cannot meet your qualifications on this and do not have the money to remove and rebuild or just to remove. I'd like to see something for that if it is going to go through. Also, I want to say, I want to see them grandfathered in, even though I know you said that wasn't going to happen, but, you know, it makes me feel better to say it.
You should be on record, go ahead.
That's what I would like to have said. And I also wanted to know, is there going to be any variance, I'd like to see as well, in these lines that they're setting? Because our neighborhood doesn't really match what they're doing. As I say, they'll go into driveway zones, hedge zones, all of that, will actually end up in some of our, you know, living rooms. So, there you go.
Thank you.
My name is John Scribner, I come from Australia, but I'm an Altadena resident, I live in 2666 Lincoln Avenue. Six years ago, I inherited a 100-foot-long hedge, which is approx, averages about seven foot to eight foot high. It's a lovely hedge, I'm a hedgeaholic. But I agree with the work being done by the planning committee that safety is also an important issue, and one of the problems from this sort of exercise is that there are so many issues which are important. I would like to see some more creative options proposed, which will allow us to address the issues to do with safety, to do with our heritage. A lot of the stuff that we've got in this community goes back to the 20s and 30s and 40s, when we had about 30 or 40% Japanese population, and they also worked on all the rich people's properties, and they brought their art from Japan, and they made a great difference to this community, and I'd like to see that preserved. My wife is also a hedgeaholic, I have a series of other short hedges inside the house, which add up to another 100-plus feet, so I need to sharpen my hedge cutters very regularly. I would like to propose consideration of at least one option whereby we actually try to mitigate some of the safety issues which are related to hedges of my size. In other countries, I've seen use of large mirrors or small mirrors posed on the corners, so that both pedestrians and the drivers can see them. That most probably would cost us $100 to $200, would most probably provide industry for the community as well as a cheaper solution than the one that's suggested. I don't believe we should be demolishing these hedges, I think we should be making them safer. Please help.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Our next four speakers will be Ms. Michelle Zack, Ms., I'm sorry, Mr. or Mrs. Fran Selyula, oh, Miss, thank you, sorry about that, Mr. Steven Lueng, Steven Lang, L-U... Oh, Steven, Mr. Lamb, Steven Lamb, okay. Sorry, Steve, I know who you are, I apologize. Your writing is bad as mine, sorry.
That's why they've been in lettering.
Ms. Shakur? Ms. Shakur?
Oh, start.
Yes?
Oh, Michelle Zack, 2485 Maringo Avenue. Since there's not going to be enforcement, there's not going to be police everywhere tearing down, asking people to tear down walls, I would just like to say, not on behalf of Altadena Heritage, because someone is going to be speaking, but that Altadena Heritage has awarded many golden poppies to houses that have, do a little bit of landscaping in front of the wall. So it can be very beautiful if you have a wall, if it's just back a few feet, and I would support the compromise that, you know, gives 20 or 30 inches, knowing that walls that don't meet that are not going to be probably torn down. Right now, we have very few walls that come directly up to the sidewalk, and they are pretty universally not very good-looking. They're kind of ugly. So I don't, I'm not in favor of making a rule that allows more and more people to do that, since the ones that are there, even though we're not using the word grandfathered in, they're not going to be affected, but I don't think we want to encourage more people putting fences right up next to the sidewalk. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I've got a visual aid, I'm sorry. There we go. I don't have enough, everybody. Let's see.
Thank you.
Hopefully, it's not part of my two minutes.
You're done.
Well, actually, the picture should probably, oh, here's one more. Here we go, here we go.
You still have time, you're fine.
All right. My name is Fran Shula, and I have 1889 East Altadena Drive, which is three houses east of Allen on the north side of the street. It's a lovely home, we've owned it 28 years, and we absolutely love it there. Of course, when they made this provision back in the 1920s, they were not counting on 12,000 cars coming by someone's home on one day. So when you look at this picture, you can actually see all the cars backed up in front of my home, I can do this any time of the day, and I can see all the cars backed up. I even have people pulling along my side, trying to pass the cars on the right, and the bottom right picture actually shows a van passing, and literally, I could, like, reach out and touch it, all right? I have trucks, I have, well, at any rate, we have horns blaring, we have music blaring, any kind of music, rap, whatever, it's blaring so loud, and you know something? Our hedges on Altadena Drive bring us sanity. It's our little private place to be, and you know something? I love it. Before I had all my hedges, I would have to garden, I love gardening, my flowers are absolutely lovely out there, but you know something? There were 11,000 people all watching me do this. My hedge keeps those people from watching me garden, which is my favorite thing to do, and beautifies our home and our street, and helps us to have a lovely and almost noise-free existence in our home. Thank you very much for your time.
I'm going to talk fast, I have a three-minute talk for two minutes. John Locke, the Enlightenment philosopher, claimed that "all just power derives from the consent of the governed." Tom Jefferson, the father of our Bill of Rights, said "the laws must be made so that they are seen to be scientific, just, and equitable." James Madison, the writer of our Constitution and the majority of the Federalist Papers, said, and this is my favorite, "Experience is the oracle of truth. When its responses are unequivocal, they ought to be conclusive and sacred." Tonight, in splendid fashion, you are considering violating these three fundamental precepts of American law in the latest rendition or some other rendition of the CSD fence and hedge ordinance. There is no consent, there never has been any consent by this community to this ordinance. It was passed in 1926, after the majority of our fences, hedges, and shrubs were already here. It's never been enforced evenly. In fact, for at least five decades, there was no enforcement. More to the point, even after spotty enforcement, county officials regularly tell homeowners not to worry that enforcement's only by complaint, although we know there are 1,700 fence complaints waiting to be enforced on, and no one knows who's in that happy list. There was no consent also, because recently, the county did a horrid outreach with a teensy card and microscopic print, something I note they did not do for cell phone tower repeaters and sewer district raises. They were mailed full-size paper with intelligible descriptions of what was at issue. In the four years now that the ATC has considered this issue, they have done no meaningful notification, no meaningful outreach, and we certainly have had no meaningful discourse. We've been told what we can't have. Certainly, the town council has walked no flyers or erected large signs. Anyway, we want the existing grandfathered, and you represent us, please represent us and tell the county that's what we want.
Hi. You know where I live. Okay. I've lived in my house since 1976. This month is the first time I ever heard about this law. If it's a law, and if you ride around Altadena, you know, maybe one tenth of one percent follows this law. I would like the council to tell the supervisors to get rid of it, because it is complaint-driven, which means that the only time someone's going to say anything is if they're mad at their neighbor. And that is, that is not what this community is supposed to be about. That's not why I live here. So my whole thing is, why can't they get rid of it? That's what I would like our council to do, get rid of it. Thank you.
Our next four speakers, John Haecle, Haecle, sorry about that, Mr. Edgar Hartwick, Hartwick, did I pronounce that right? Miss Deborah West Jones, and Mr. Rivers Jacquez, in that order.
Yeah, my name is John Haecle, H-A-E-C-K-L, just sort of forced to have it, you know we spell it. The address is 1945 Homewood Drive in Altadena. I'm basically just going to repeat what you've already heard, ad nauseam. I'm basically, the issue is the hedge. Our property addresses on Homewood Drive, but the backyard extends all the way through to Altadena Drive, and in fact, the driveway comes off Altadena Drive. My parents bought the house almost 50 years ago in September 1967. The house was built in 1946, 1947 by the Norris family, and the hedge was probably put in at the time the house was built. Just like the lady that spoke a few minutes ago about living on Altadena Drive, you know, and the issue about privacy. If we're forced to trim the hedge down, it's considered way higher than 42 inches, but if we're forced under this proposed ordinance to trim it to 42 inches, it's going to, you know, create a hardship in terms of what the lady just spoke to on privacy. You know, I don't know how many cars are going through Altadena Drive, but it's, you know, I'm sure there's, you know, thousands in any given 24-hour period. You know, like I said, our property goes through the backyard through to Altadena Drive. The hedge has been there 50-plus years. You know, by all admissions, it's taller than 42 inches, but like I said, if we're forced under this proposed ordinance to trim it to three and a half feet, just like the lady said, it's going to create a privacy hardship, and, you know, to be quite honest, one of the reasons we're all, well, maybe not all, but the majority of us are opposed to this is it could adversely affect the property values when you go to sell the house.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, my name is Edgar Hartwick, we live at 1661 East Mendocino, we've been there for 30 years, and I have a hedge in the front, a large hedge, it's been there, and we, like Ms. Shula I mentioned, it offers us a privacy. And one thing we did when we moved here about 30 years ago, why we moved to Altadena, was because it was unique. It wasn't a Stepford city, it wasn't a city like all other cities. Altadena was a unique city with a lot of different personalities, a lot of character, and I think what the county is trying to do is destroy that character that we have here. The only reason you come to Altadena is because you live in Altadena. We don't have a drive-through community. The county is trying to grab a hold of that and steal it from us, and we cherish it. The trees, the shrubs, the hedges, it's why we live here. The lady spoke that if this ordinance is passed, that the county's not going to send out people and look at your property. That's absolutely 100% wrong, you're incorrect. I have property in Mendocino, I have property in Palm and on Casitas. The other thing about your voting, did you vote by person or did you vote by parcel? I'm one person, but I have multiple parcels that I represent, that I own. And so your numbers should reflect the parcel count, not the individual count. I forgot what I was going to say, but the, what was I saying? Anyway, I don't like it, and it's, oh, but what I'm saying about you're 100% wrong is because I have property where people had complained, because one of my tenants had parked a car next to the, too close to the house, they reported it to the county, the county came out and tried to issue me a citation, and I told them it was just a temporary thing. At other property where they complained, some people will complain. These folks aren't going to complain, but people like to complain, and there will be people in the community that will drive by your place and see a hedge, and they say, "That doesn't meet ordinance, call up the county," and be persistent with the county, and the county will have to come out and look at it and say, "Hey, it doesn't meet it, take it down."
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
My name is Deborah West Jones, I live at 195...
I live at 195 Ventura. And I'm in agreement with everything that's been said, and we just don't want this to happen. We've been working with the county and trying to cooperate, and they have been very uncooperative in trying to work with us on these properties that when we bought the property, they didn't have certain permits, and they drag things on. They are not user-friendly. So, I'm in agreement with everything that's been said, and we do not want to see this pass.
How you doing, council member and fellow Altadena neighbors? My name is Rivers Jacquez. I live at 419 West Altadena Drive. I've been owner of my home, my wife and I, for 24 years. I've been a resident of Altadena since 1972. Graduated from Elliott, graduated from MIR in '78. So, I've been, you know, Altadena, other than my time in the military when I was away for years. But I came back to Altadena because I have a connection here. This is unique in Southern California as far as I'm concerned. So, when I hear about some unelected bureaucrat or some individual that doesn't even live in Altadena, trying to impose their will on our citizenship here, that's why I'm here today or tonight, is because I had to come in and participate with my neighbors in our opposition to someone imposing a 1920 or whatever rule or ordinance upon the people. You know, the people have a right to say, "This is how we want our neighborhood and how we want our houses to be." And, you know, it just, in my opinion, it's just that simple. And, you know, a lot of us here have the ability to up and leave. And, you know, not just Altadena, but California, because it's becoming a little bit ridiculous every time I turn around. I just got finished paying my second installment on my property tax, and every time I turn around, I'm getting hit with more fees and assessments and this and that. I really have to start looking and taking a real solid look at, do I wanna retire here? Or do I wanna move on? Because it's really coming down to that. Okay? So, what I would tell you in supporting everything that's been said is that, you know, you represent us, do the right thing. Go back to the county and tell them the people don't want this.
Our next four speakers, Ms. Linda World? Okay, great. Linda? Philip, Philip, Mr. Philip Broussard? Oh, okay. Mr. or Ms. Jesse Hope? Mr. Jesse Hope, sorry about that. And Mr. John Schreiber, Schreiber, I'm sorry. Oh, you probably...
Yeah.
Okay. Must have been another one in there. That's okay. Miss, let's put that on there. Miss? Mr. Ian McFat, McPhee? Sorry about that.
Okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Linda World. I live at 2767 Glen Rose Avenue. And I am here, I'm not speaking on, well, first of all, as a resident, I want to say that I live on a street with a very dangerous corner, that I have to basically take my life in my hand every time I go into my driveway. Mendocino runs into my driveway. And there are no hedges there, so I'm usually on the corner, which I'm grateful for, but there are often vans and cars parked there, and I can't see them. So, just generally, I appreciate the idea of the restrictions that are imposed on hedges and fences for the sake of safety. I can really understand people on Altadena Drive in particular not, I mean, I can understand how they feel. I live on a quieter street. My own fence is well within regulations. The one hedge on my street is out of compliance. It's hideous. I won't be calling anybody on it, but it's ugly, and it's just exactly what you don't want to happen with hedges. I actually believe in government, and that doesn't seem to be very popular these days. I'm sorry that regulations hurt people, but in general, I want to, at the risk of getting round tomatoes thrown at me, I want to express some sympathy. For the three and a half years of citizens who served on the CSD committee at open monthly meetings that people could come to, to register what they thought and felt about this. The county was at all those meetings too. And like everyone else, I'm disheartened by the operations of bureaucracy. I don't particularly like the idea of, personally do not like the idea of enforcement by, you know, Estasi-type enforcement where your neighbors rat on you. I, as a, let's see, there was one other thing I wanted to say that was really kind of... I guess that's just what I want to, I want to speak up. I know that you show up and you complain, and if I had a complaint here, I would complain too. But I basically support government processes, and I think we pay taxes for a reason, and I'm glad to live in a country where I do things.
Hello there. I'm Philip Broussard, and I live at 59 Lavignacia Court, Altadena. I have a neighbor here that was here speaking earlier about our little neighborhood. My house is built in 1926, and as my neighbor was saying earlier, our houses are really small. I have a 972-square-foot home. I live on a corner lot, and I'm just behind the cemetery up on Woodbury and Fair Oaks. If we were to adhere to this agenda here that you're trying, that you're discussing here, we would start losing valuable property, obviously on our property. I built a fence, when I bought the house, there had a fence. I replaced the fence a few years ago that I felt was, would enhance the property value. Also have a small child, have an animal. My fence is see-through, and we have some plants and some shrubs to make it nice, but it is square footage for us that we use. We live in Southern California. We like to have a part of our lives outside of our home as well, since our home is so small on the interior. We have an outdoor patio. And we just, we just feel that we oppose this, this what you're trying to pass along to us because it invades our property, and we're not necessarily interested in doing that at this time. Thank you very much.
My name is Jesse Hope. This is my wife Paula. We live at 2601 Morsley Road in Altadena, and we've been residents here for 31 years now. And our kids grew up here. We grew up in a house that's surrounded by really high bushes. They were there when we bought the place. They were planted probably in 1920. They haven't changed much, and they're big, they're wide, and they're a combination of trees and bushes. And I agree with the lady who spoke before. There is a real value to the serenity and privacy and seclusion that it affords our family. Our house has been the cornerstone of our family for decades now. Everybody comes to our house because it's hidden, because it's parked like, because it's serene. And these regulations will change our lives completely. I don't know how else to say it. It makes me so upset about this whole thing. It just feels like this is being forced upon me, forced upon me with very little notice. I know you can say that this was, there was ample opportunity for people to go ahead and make their input known, but I didn't know about any of this stuff. I really didn't. And I can't think, I mean, the people in this room, you can see how many people have turned up for this. And it's because somebody actually came along and notified us in a real way that this is going to happen. And, well, I don't think anybody else did this.
This is not our deal, right? You need to know that it's the county, so just calm down.
I think I speak for just a number of people in saying that we really, really don't want this to happen. The concept of neighbor-on-neighbor telling on each other, just that opportunity, just is revolting to me. I can't even tell you how bad that makes me feel, that we would turn into a place like that. So, I guess I can really just say, I just think this can be a really divisive issue, and it really saddens me, and it really saddens me to me, to see that our community is going to be damaged by this. I mean, our place is just gonna turn into just a bunch of rubble, really. That's all I can say.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ian McPhee. Just for the record, I have no hedges at my house, not one. But I am interested in this idea of governance. And what's clear to me tonight, you know, as I'm listening to my neighbors talk about, I live at 2885 Windfall. As I listen to my neighbors talk about their experiences, is that they're clearly asking for us as a community to be a little bit more textured in our responses. And what I mean by that is, Altadena Drive in particular is a thoroughfare, and it makes sense that you should have hedges there. That makes sense. And if you actually look at the ordinances here, the Altadena Community Standards District is established to ensure that new and expanded structures are compatible in size and scale, and that they protect the light, air, and privacy of existing single-family residences from negative impacts. That's your intent and purpose. That's the reason this is created. In my street, you can tear down any hedges, that's fine. I actually think that would make sense because there, it should be a standard in my street that the residences are seen. I drive on Altadena Drive every day. I go to work on that thoroughfare. It only makes sense that we have a textured response to the interests of our community. And those are going to be different depending on where you live. And I would ask that the Altadena County Council think about the way that they are responding. And in order to get a really textured response, one that values the diversity in this room, I would ask that we have dialogue. This is not dialogue. And if that means sitting down at a table and creating something that makes sense for a lot of the folks in this room, I would welcome that. Thank you.
The last four individuals are Charlene, the Charlene Brown. Miss, I think it's Ada Alvarado.
I don't know.
Yeah? Well, we'll make it part of the record nonetheless. Ada Alvarado. Mr. Gary Bryant. And is it Tom or Tim John?
Terry.
I'm sorry, it's Miss Terry Jones.
Hi, I'm Charlene Brown. I live across the street in Altadena. And I came home one day, one evening last week, dark, and this thing was supposed to get on my fence. Friendly notice of violation. Violation of what? And then I read this thing, and I'm gonna tell you, I'm not gonna say what I wrote on a comment, those words, but I felt like this was like the scuff of the state in a dictatorship here. And I thought Altadena was an individual homes where it's beautiful, beautified, and these raids for these fences. I mean, it's like an HOA, most outrageous. And my question is, does the county, who holds the county responsible? They have these things enforced, if they don't enforce. And for example, on the corner of Lincoln and Crosby, the county has a lot there, it's like a forest. People walk down there and smoke, I mean, it can burn the whole neighborhood. I've called three or four times, and the one lady told me, "Oh, that's not the county." Said they sent out somebody just to remove the forest off the sidewalk. They were the sidewalk people. They said I had to call and ask about the groundspeople. And then, even going out of my driveway, there's not hedges that create a safety factor. It's the commercial vehicles that the county doesn't enforce. They should not park there overnight. And again, my fence, I lived in Altadena 31 years. My fence must be 40 years old because the house was born, was designed in '24. But that fence is old, and every time I do a repair, I have to file for a permit, and I'm just finishing. I don't have to do a permit with this kind of money, then how do I pay for the lousy fence?
Good evening, council members. My name is Gary Bryant, and I live at 304 Wall Pello Street. My property was originally part of the Weber Estate, built prior to 1927. When the lot was divided, the pool that is in the front yard became part of my property. So, as you can imagine, the pool is 20 by 50. It's an old estate pool. Based on what this says, technically, there's a conflict because the county requires a five-foot fence at a minimum around the pool. So, you can imagine my consternation, notwithstanding my attorney who said to me, "Are you nuts? You need to make sure that that property is secured because it is an attractive nuisance." So, I have a six-foot fence that is in my front yard. I put a hedge in front of that fence to soften the property. So, again, you can understand why I am very concerned with this ordinance because I have a conflict here. And I have no intention, of course, of removing the fence because even a four-foot fence, a kid can jump over it and have a great time, and my exposure is great. So, I am in opposition of this. In addition, our family over here asked me, they said, "What about trees?" I mean, you reference fences, but then I guess they have trees that are impacted by this ordinance. So, again, I think we need to revisit this, and I would encourage the council to do so.
Hi, I'm Terry Jones. I live at 2397 North Altadena Drive, so we definitely have a theme going here. My mother is the homeowner. She's back there. We've lived at that property for 40 years now. Before that, we lived on North Fair Oaks, and we lived just above Las Flores. And we also lived on North Raymond Avenue off of Palm, where we had absolutely no frontage at all to the street. But Fair Oaks and Altadena Drive are another matter. So, I want to bring up several things very quickly. One is, in fact, trees. One of the reasons a lot of us live in Altadena is because of its basically sort of semi-rural character, and we love the trees, and we love the greenery, and we love the mountains and the foothill habitat. We've got some trees that would have to come down, and I'm talking about mature trees on Altadena Drive because the trees were probably planted before the road was ever widened as much as it presently is. We also have big dogs. We have fencing that probably meets the specifications as long as where the setback works. It's see-through, and we have a hedge in front of the fence to make it look prettier. And we have gates that we need to close in our driveway zone from time to time when we let the dogs out front. They're never out in front of our yards unsupervised. But when we want them outside, when we're working out in front doing our gardening, then we need to be able to contain those dogs because, believe me, Altadena Drive is not a safe place for them. You don't want them in front of your cars, and we certainly don't want them there either. And I could rattle off, I don't have time, but I could tell you the number of traffic accidents that have occurred on or near our property, and the neighbor's dog that got killed about 15 years ago. The traffic on Altadena Drive is a serious hazard, and I think Mr. McPhee was exactly right when he said that we have to think of a more textured response to these regulations. One of the things, well, I would simply like to suggest, in places where the speed limit is 35 miles or higher because it's deemed a major thoroughfare, fences and hedges are kind of necessary.
Okay. So, I've written down all of your comments.
So I've written down all of your comments. Oh, you said that was it?
I thought that was it.
Can I take the place of someone who declined to comment?
Sure, did you feel a lot of comment?
I did not. I just survived.
That's fine, that's fine. Maybe you just state your name and your address.
I'm Andrea Morseberg. And I'm here to actually change the subject a little bit. Seems like a lot of the people here don't want their hedges cut down, which I agree with. I live next to the house that has been literally abandoned and is an eyesore in Altadena, right next to 1795 East Altadena, which is where I live. And I have had Antonovich's office on speed dial for several years. The pool was not emptied during the viral issue with standing water. The house has been in not bad repair, in no repair, for years. And I think we would be well off to maybe spend some of our time in making those kinds of situations that are also not safe go away by holding those property owners to some rules and regulations that should make living or having a house in our neighborhood, which we all take great pride in to being a part of, not be in that kind of state of disrepair. And I think I would like to encourage you to really look at some of those situations. And there aren't many. I happen to live next to one of them, and I'm really getting quite tired of it. And I would really like some help on spending your energy on something like that versus on these hedges that people are not wanting to get rid of. Thank you.
Ma'am, ma'am, if you leave your contact information up here, I'm sure we can figure out which one of these council members is in your census tract, and they absolutely can help contact the county for you. So I just want to offer that support. We need your contact information. You can drop it off with us.
Just get one of the public comment cards in the back.
Okay. So there's a couple of things, before I go back to my recommendation here, there is a couple of things that I wanted to mention, and I can answer any of your questions. So the option, honestly, for not adopting any of, we can say to the, we absolutely can say to the county that we will not change, make this change to the CSD. And then they will start enforcing the law that's been in touch since 1927. And that's the only other option, guys. What we have, because this is county code, countywide in all of LA County, what we are, what we're living under right now that has not been being enforced is LA County Code that applies to everywhere in unincorporated LA County unless there's a city of Pasadena that has different rules or whatever, right? This is the county code. It's been in place since you've moved into your homes. You guys, hang on. This is county code. There's county code that... All right, I'm telling you that our options are to revert to what we have today, and they will start enforcing that. What we've proposed here is better, less strict, more loose than the existing county code. So what you have today, if we say to the county today, go ahead and start enforcing, they would come out and they would make you do more to your fences and hedges than this will ask you to do. I'm just... What I just said is, if they had to come out, you know what? If they had to come out to your property, if somebody complained, look, this has been in effect on and off for the last, since 1927. They have enforced. Some people will make you think that they've never enforced fences and hedges, and quite frankly, they enforce it if you're having electricity go into it, you have to get a permit, they will enforce the height then. If there's a lot, if you're over an oak tree, they will enforce the oak tree permits. So there is lots of things that if nobody's complained about that you've built under an oak tree, then you're lucky. If nobody has complained about the fact that your hedges are so high, then you're lucky. And you've been, that's the way it's been for all this time. The only change will come if everybody in all of Altadena, besides the number of people that are here, the other 40, the other 38,000 people in Altadena, if somebody runs around and starts, you know, every single code in LA County is complaint-driven from a complaint perspective. So the woman that asked us to help with the house, that house has codes that they're in violations of, and that's what we will help them do, is enforce those codes. You can't pick and choose your codes in LA County. You can't say, oh, I want chickens in my house, and so I'm gonna keep chickens in my house. You're not allowed to have backyard bees. So those of you that have backyard bees are in, not in compliance with the LA County Code. But lots of people have chickens and bees. So what I'm trying to say to you is, this is, and by the way, for those of you who, there are a lot of new faces here. For those of you who do not know anything about the Altadena Town Council, we are all volunteers. We have houses in Altadena just like you do. We have to comply with the code just like you do. And by the way, we have no power with the county other than to tell the county what we hear from the Altadena people. Then we make a recommendation of one way or another, and quite frankly, the county can honestly do, they take into consideration what we tell them, and then they can make their own decision about whether they... Many years ago, we approved a cell tower in an area, and we said, okay, yeah, everybody would, they can't dial 911 in this area, we'd love to have a cell tower. And in the end, they didn't approve it. So that cell tower that year didn't get put up. Now, maybe that was a good thing, maybe not, but it was something against what LA County said, against what we said to do. All we're gonna do is make a recommendation. And we can make a recommendation that says, don't do any of this. And the solution to that will be that they will start enforcing the existing code. Anyway, so I just want you to know that reverting to county code is the other option. All of this, all of this, guys, is looser than the existing county code. We do not, we will send down a letter to the county that says, all of the tallies of all the people, many, 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 many of you have written emails to the, down to the county, and you're welcome to do that as well. There's on the website that I guess is planning.lacounty, is that, am I doing that in the right order? Is David still here? It's planning.lacounty? No. Yeah, .gov/altadena. And there's a way for you to put an email into that that will go into the people that are gonna make this final decision. I recommend everybody do that. You can send the emails to us, and we will make sure that they get to the right place. All of us, all of us, you can find us all on the Altadena Town Council website. But we are, all we're gonna do is send a recommendation down to the county that says, look, we know that our other option is to revert to county code. Here are all the people that asked for us to do nothing and for every fence and hedge in Altadena to be just left alone, and we'll say that to them too. But that's not what they're gonna agree to, so... Because we're part of LA County, unincorporated LA County, I'm not gonna, okay, so we...
Okay.
So I just want to make sure that everybody understood...
Just one moment, just one moment then.
For those of you that do not understand, we're volunteers like you, we're neighbors, we do this on our free time, and we're gonna just do the best we can for Altadena. And so then I have, I know there, you needed to...
Yeah, I want to say something.
There's no more public comment, I guess.
We do not have public comments. So you should not be, you should not be addressing the comments that are coming from the, from the audience. We had the opportunity, hold on, we had the opportunity, they had the opportunity to make those comments, and now you are addressing it. I would like the audience to please hear what the chairman of the Land Use Committee has to say, then we will bring it back to the council and have dialogue amongst ourselves. You've had the opportunity to make your comments, and if you have additional questions, what I suggest that you do is send it to the town council so that we can move this along. That's the way that I would like to say it.
So what I would like to do is, is there any other, are there any questions or concerns or comments? Go ahead.
Yes, there is a comment from Councilmember Mossen.
Okay, go ahead.
So I want to weigh in on what I heard in public comment and my understanding of what we're dealing with here. And I just want to inform everyone here. First off, I don't have a hedge or a fence in my front yard, but I actually do like fences and hedges. And if I had a big enough piece of property, I'd have a magnificent hedge out front if I were allowed to. But it probably overwhelmed my house considering the size of my lot. But I think it really is important, this room, for you to understand, this room is typically not this full. Typically, this room is fairly empty. We didn't post anything on your fences or on your hedges. Frankly, the can that went around is the can that picks up the budget that we use to operate, and it pays for anything that costs money. And if the can doesn't cover it, then we come out of our pockets oftentimes to cover these things. And so your participation tonight is really important, and it's appreciated, but you have to understand that your presence here tonight, at this stage of the game, is at the end of a very long process, a years-long process, where the council did everything that we could. When there was something called the Altadena Blog, we posted in there, we posted in Neighborhood, we posted on our Facebook pages and our Twitter feeds. And we even had a report done in the Star News that talked about the CSD project that went on for three years. I believe they met twice, was it twice a week?
Yeah, twice a month.
Twice a month, for three years at the senior center. And I went down to that meeting many times, and I voiced my opinions. I'm a pro-hedge guy, and I pushed and said, hey, how about this, how about that? I talked, I did talk about the mirrors myself and a number of other things. And there's, the, believe me, the people that volunteered to do that thankless job labored over pushing the line as far as they could push it without the county just saying, you guys are nuts. Who do you think you are? You don't get to make up the rules. You guys aren't the government. We're the government here in the county, and we set the rules for everybody in LA County. And so that's, so we, as a, as a community, had an opportunity to push that line as far as we could go before it would break. And this is what was represented by what we have here. Now, I, listening to, you know, to some of the comments, some of the things that I thought were really, really magnificent comments were the idea that, you know, there is more than one way to skin a cat. And so I personally have a lot of questions about the issue of how the height of hedges impacts safety. I get the idea you don't want to run out of, run over somebody coming out of your driveway. But, you know, beyond that, I don't see how, you know, some hedges that aren't transparent create an incredible safety hazard far from, you know, far from the driveway. I don't see how something in your backyard abuts Altadena Drive creates a safety hazard. I don't understand it. I don't necessarily agree with it, but it's not up to me to say that, look, I don't, you know, county, I don't, I don't agree with what your assessments. It's their job, with the budget that they have, to hire experts to study these things, and they come up with laws. Now, I will tell you right now that this full room right here has an impact at the county. So fill up the county chairs when it comes time for them to deal with this thing. We will keep posted on our website when that goes on there. Fill up the county chairs. Send your correspondence. But I also encourage you to participate in the mechanisms that we create here through the Altadena Town Council, the CSD Committee. We have a land use committee meeting that deals with important issues. And sometimes this room is full, and most of the time, the room is nearly empty. But this is an important lesson to Altadena, that we have to be involved at the beginning of decision-making. We have to, we have to be involved at the point where this thing is taken up, and we have to make our voices heard there. If we have good ideas, there's a time and an opportunity to do that. And if we don't do a very good job of promoting to you, it's because we don't have budget. So there's an opportunity for you to impact our efficacy as well by putting in the can. So I, you know, as a representative, I've been volunteering for the last six years doing this work with no pay. And I encourage you to volunteer your time as well. If you don't want to serve on the council, come to our meetings and participate in the discussion. Participate financially and correspond with the county. We need your help to make things happen the way that we want them to be seen. I've lived in Altadena since 1972. I was a kid back then. I'm a very, very young man. But I've enjoyed this, this community. I've enjoyed the hedges. I've enjoyed, I used to enjoy going down to the Arroyo Seco when, you know, when there was a quarry down there. So I know this community. I know why we live here, and I want to preserve the character of this community. But I implore you to participate with us to preserve our community as best we can.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Vega.
I was wondering if we could get the representative from the county to maybe give some input as to if this is voted down, what we're looking at is a comparison, so we have a true understanding?
Well, from the county's, from the regional planning perspective, what we support was what was approved, recommended for approval by the Regional Planning Commission. What was put forth post-hearing after October 26th was a proposal by the board office to further loosen the rules to accommodate more existing fences, walls, and hedges. And this forum today, tonight, was to capture your comments, which are very much taken seriously by the board and will be taken under consideration at the next hearing in May, May 23rd downtown. So I can't say that there will be a final decision on that date. They may, they may take all the comments and continue it again, but eventually, a decision will be made, and your comments are very valuable, and this forum is very valuable to the county. And we do appreciate how you feel about the community and how passionate you are and how much you showed up tonight. So we do appreciate that, and we take it under consideration. Very much so.
David, if you could, David?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
If you could, my understanding is that we have the existing code today, which is county code, that we do for fences and hedges, right?
Right.
We recommended in the item that went before the board on 10/28, right?
26th, yeah, October 26th.
Okay, sorry, 10/26, is the document that everybody has.
The CS, the draft CSD.
Right, that says at the bottom of it, approved by Regional Planning Commission.
Recommended for approval, yeah, by the board.
Right, that went, that went for approval, and the Regional Planning Commission approved it. It did not get as far as getting approved by the board because they said, oh, wait a minute, we want to look at it again. So we have the county code that we have today, right?
Right.
We have the revision that the county has looked at one more time and helped us push one more time a little bit the envelope, right?
Another alternative, yes.
Right, so we, so we have county code, we have the one that went through 10/28, and then we have the one that we're trying to sort of hybridize here, right? So if we were to say to you, we're not gonna do these two, right? We're gonna, we're not gonna change fences and hedges in this version of the CSD, but that's one of our options, is to say to you, we're taking fences and hedges out of our CSD revision, right?
Right, and you would be, you would be saying this to the board?
Yes, that's right.
Board office, because...
We would say to the board, we've come to the conclusion that we can't come to a conclusion, and so we're gonna take fences and hedges out of this revision of the CSD that we're trying to get through. So they can just approve the CSD the way it is without...
Without any of the...
Right, all other revisions without fences and hedges. If we do that, what happens?
It's up to the board to decide.
No, what happens, if they say, okay, fine, we're gonna take fences and hedges out of the CSD revision.
So what's the new standard then?
What then do we go to?
It's up to them to decide what the new standard would be because they're, they're gonna take what comments you've given under consideration so far. There are other CSDs that have different fence, wall, and hedge standards, a little more loose than the county standard. There's a few that have those.
Okay, well, I'm just gonna stop you right there because for three years, we sat with you guys in a room, and... And if we're where we are and we're not where we could be, then that's not okay. So I'll come back to you tomorrow. I'll talk to you guys tomorrow about this and see if there's... Because I don't, you're not going to have all the details tonight, and I understand that. So I will, what we are, what we can do is we can say, I think we have two, we have a couple of options here. So we can say, we have the option of saying, don't do anything to fences and hedges. And quite frankly, I think the Board would take us back to, we would revert to county code.
That's a possibility. It's not, it's not a decision that's already made.
But they could then say, okay, thanks for relooking at it, and we have all your comments, and the majority of people want us to do nothing, and it went through Regional Planning for the one that went through 10/28, so we'll just adopt 10/28. They can say that.
They can say that.
Right.
They can adopt what the Planning Commission recommended.
Or we can say, we like the thing, the things you came up with today are a little better. We like that. We'd like a little bit of a hybrid, and we could ask them to come back to us with that thing. So I guess what I need to do here, I need to be able to tell the supervisor what we want the next steps to be, council. We can send a note down to, I guess, Regional Planning and Public Works that says, you know, can you get us another draft that's a little more like hybridized between the two that we have, which is looser than what we have had, Justin? And then we can, or we can not do anything tonight and table it till our next meeting, and I can go down and...
Again, those comments would be, I mean, we would take them, but we would pass them on to the Board Office, because they're the decision-makers at this point.
Right.
They're the ultimate decision-makers.
It's the Board of Supervisors.
Right, and they can, they can table it. They can take more comments. They can...
I'm trying to figure out what we're going to do tonight.
Right, and your recommendation does hold a lot of weight because you are the community. You live here, and you represent the community. The community has spoken. These comments are very much taken into consideration.
Yes, and they have, they do have, you know, Steve Lamb has a section in the 983-page document that went to the Board. So all of your emails that you send down are actually part of the record.
Yes, sir.
And so, yeah, so anyway, I guess, thanks, David. I appreciate it.
Sure, you're very welcome.
I'm not done yet with the...
I can't go yet?
I really do have a question, though, in terms of addressing. If it gets tabled or taken out, and we go back in the counter-reverse, I know that they can make adjustments. But if it stands as it is, can you give everybody the clear understanding of what that would be?
If it stands as it is, as is today?
As is today.
Today is 42 inches height of fences and walls in the required front yard, whatever your minimum setback is.
Don't matter what. Can you repeat that one more time?
Forty-two inches in the front yard, the front yard setback. If you have more than the required front yard in your property, then you can have what you want beyond that. But the required front, say you have a 20-foot setback. It's the 20-foot setback that applies to 42 inches in that front yard.
Yes, there's no six feet in the front yard.
There's no six feet right now.
Under any circumstances? Not up against the edge of your yard, right?
No.
Okay, so...
And it is complaint-driven, yeah, that will likely continue.
Billy, hold on one moment. I have Councilmember Musson to ask a question, then you'll be next.
David, you mentioned that there are some examples of, that there are some examples of looser CSDs?
Mostly in the Antelope Valley, I think. Not sure which one it is. A couple of them have a couple of little tweaks that our community, the community wanted.
Are those...
San Francisco, I think, comes to mind right now.
Would you say that those are looser than our proposed CSD?
Some are more strict, and some are looser in a few ways.
Okay, and so how do we get access to what those looser? You'll do it?
Yeah, we can work together, and we can give you that information.
Okay, thank you.
Of what's existing.
Okay, hold on one moment. Are you done?
I'm done.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted some clarification. Yes, it stays the same. You said if every, it's going to be 42 inches, it stays the same.
Right.
Then that means that it will be complaint-driven? Like if your hedge is six feet, you know, or more than the 42, it can stay like that unless someone complains? And then what you will come out and enforce is you will go to that person and say, okay, we got a complaint, and you're going to have to cut your hedge just to 42 inches.
Right.
But it will only be that particular person, that particular household.
Right, on that complaint-driven, that's what it is.
The only way it would pertain to all of Altadena is if we began to complain about each other.
Right.
That's what I'm understanding you to say.
Right, and it's always been complaint-driven. So that's why it's important that you make a recommendation to the Board, that they take the action that the community is supporting.
So you're not saying then that we just have to go and cut our six-foot hedge down if it stays the same? That's not, that's not what's being broadcast to the community? That we adopt this, where everybody's going to have to just cut their hedges? We don't have to do that unless someone complains. That's what I'm understanding you to say.
Whatever ordinance is adopted, that's what will be complaint, enforced on a complaint-driven basis, yes.
Okay. Yes.
It can be.
Okay, Councilmember Malone?
I just want to ask one question. Is that for structures, fences and hedges that are over six feet, and there are quite a few of them around town, they would require a permit anyway, correct?
Over six feet.
So over six feet, one inch, and I've seen lots of walls with fences on top and everything else. So regardless if you have that, it still wouldn't comply because it requires a permit, and they would have to get a permit for that structure.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Right, anything over what's in here requires a permit. Or electrical, if you're putting electrical in, it requires a permit. So if you have a, if you have a wall with electricity in it that wasn't permitted, you know, that's another problem.
Right.
That was brought up, as far as I understand.
It does, tell the language. The language, tell the language.
The language is if the trees form a barrier similar to a hedge. If it's a barrier. Yes, like, I use the example of Italian cypress. Those are like a hedge. They're technically trees, but they're planted close enough together, they form a hedge, like a structure. Regular, mature trees, we are not targeting them. We don't want people chop down mature 50-plus-year-old trees.
And if you had an oak tree in your property close to the edge, you wouldn't be, you wouldn't be able to put a fence up regardless if it came between the tree.
Right, exactly.
Okay, thank you so much for the clarification.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Marks, would you like to conclude? Okay, while you're trying to figure that out, I can make a couple of comments. First of all, I'd like to thank the community for coming out. This is what we've been hoping for. And we would have hoped that, three years ago, that everybody came en masse like this to resolve this. So where we are now is that the, first of all, we know that ignorance of the law or the regulation is not so much of an excuse. From what we've heard tonight, most people may or may not know what the ordinance, the regulations are. So over the years, they've been, they've been noncompliant. So now, how do we go forward? Where do we go from here? We know that, I believe, maybe about Steve, you can help me on this. Maybe about 15 years ago, somebody went around and gathered information about properties that were noncompliant. That was when the county went ahead and did a moral term not to enforce. But we were noncompliant. We didn't do what we were supposed to do. How do we mitigate that? How do we find a middle ground to be able to move forward so that we can get the restrictions a little bit more loose, if possible? That's where we are. So we need to understand that, that, yes, we have been in violation, and it's been complaint-driven, and it has not been enforced since then. But that doesn't make you right. So how do we, I'm trying to still get her some time to... Okay, thank you.
So what I'd like to do is say that, based on the feedback received tonight from the community, that I move that we recommend that we take this, take the presentation back to the supervisor's office and ask them to reevaluate the alternative language one more time and present us with their final offer of what they can do and the options. We'll get them to answer back. I know a lot of people have answered back, have gotten answers back about grandfathering. But we'll get a document that has their formal written position on grandfathering, and then communicate. That will just be the go-between between the county and the community. So what I'm saying is that we want to, I move that we, based on the feedback received tonight from the community, I move that we recommend that we send the latest alternative language document back to the supervisor's office and ask them to reevaluate it one more time and to give us a final, clear version. Yeah, that's my motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion and properly seconded by Councilmember Malone. Discussion.
Can we add some language to that, where we're basically also asking them for the most loose language that they have in the county?
We've done that, we have done that for three years. So I'm just going to tell you, I will go back to them and give them that information, yes.
Right, but I just want to make sure that we have in the language that we're just asking for them to just tell us what the most loose language is, even though they've already done that, so that we have something very specific for the next community meeting.
Yeah, that's what I said. And I know they're not going to grandfather, but I'll put in there that we had all these comments about grandfathering, add them to the other ones. Don't worry, we'll, I'll get it all in there. Okay, thank you. Any other discussion?
And can we put in there the number of individuals that spoke and indicated they were opposed as opposed to in favor? I'd like to make sure.
That's what we do anyway, yeah. That's what we do.
Okay, you've heard the motion, and any further discussions? Okay, so...
Okay. They call for a vote?
Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposing, abstaining? Okay.
Okay, thank you. So before we, before Cory shuts me up, if you guys, you guys need to, now that some of you know that we exist, I encourage you all to give us a chance to help you for, you know, for the woman on Altadena Drive who has a lot of crash-ups in front of her house. Let's get the CHP out there. I mean, there are a lot of things that we can do to make the county work for us, and that's what we're here really to do. We're not here to take abuse. We're not here to, we're really trying to help as much as we possibly can. So if you get in touch with your person, and we can help you with that if you come up after the meeting, we'll get you in touch, and we'll see what we can do to help.
Okay, so...
Okay, I shouldn't have said anything. My apologies. Let's move on.
All right, so we're moving on to...
Let's move on.
The next item on the agenda will be 5.2. That will be Altadena Filming Committee, Councilmember Coleman.
We've got a lot more meetings. So for those of you that are leaving and not going to hear about what else is going on in Altadena, I encourage you to stay. Well, the library's going to do a report for you to tell you all the things that they're doing, and there's a whole bunch of stuff going on in Altadena that you may not know about. So anyway, go ahead. I'm over it. I'm done, sorry. My little rant.
Before you leave, I recommend that you also look up your council member and reach out to your council member. Let us know who you are. If there's anyone from 4610, my name is Brent Musson. Your two council members here are willing to talk to you, add in an item about anything you want to talk about.
That's the one, give that to either Ann or...
Okay, Filming Committee, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Filming Committee has a draft of the detailed notes on the Town Hall and location filming, and we're working on that and hope to have it ready for posting on the Altadena Town Council website soon. Also, the Filming Committee is following up on issues and questions that have arisen at the Town Hall that took place on February 28th and in communications with residents. For example, we contacted Arturo Pino on Film LA, of Film LA, regarding a resident's question about advanced notification of film shoots by email. Arturo has replied that in neighborhoods that have filming activity, Film LA will gauge the amount of filming activity, and if they conclude that there's sufficient filming activity and neighborhood interest in email notification, they will create neighborhood boundaries that would define an area that could receive email notifications for activities in their area. These email notifications will have the same information as the door hangers that are usually distributed before a film shoot. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, moving on to the Election Committee, Councilwoman Sutherland.
I can be very brief. There are a couple of dates that are going to be important coming up for the elections. Those of you that may or may not know the elections, annual elections will be held in June. And the very next date coming up is the end of this week, on Friday, April 21st. The application packages for anyone who's interested in running for a council seat this time will be available here at the Community Center, which is open from 8:00 to 5:00, Monday through Friday, or online at the Altadena Town Council website. You can download the application information there. And they are going to need to be returned here at the Community Center if you would like to run for election on Friday, May 12th. Any questions on election from the council members?
Yeah, well, I just want to say that we also have a land use committee, which is where we decide a lot of different things, helping the county know what we want to do. We did that with the Charles Company Building at Lake Calaveras, and it helped a lot with that building. I would encourage people that maybe don't understand about the county or how that works and everything to start out with land use committee. And we have loads of the Town Council people are on land use and often want to have somebody else sit for them in their census check. So if you're interested in any of the land use stuff, of which fences and hedges and CSD were a part, then I'd like to encourage you to get in touch with me and see if there's an opportunity for you next year for that. Okay.
Okay, thank you. And Altadena Public Library, Mindiquita. Well, nice to see you.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you for encouraging people to stay. That was awesome. And I did bring Brian with me again tonight because we're going to talk about the upcoming Town Hall a little bit. So there's a couple of things, as usual, I want to pass out. So one thing I want to talk about is the passports. So those are out now. And these are little things the library's doing to encourage people in the community to visit local businesses and to also use the library services. So if you complete 10 of these things and then bring this in on our grand reopening party on June 10th, you can win one of 10 Kindles and lots of gift certificates. So we are passing those out like crazy around town. We haven't been passing them out at the library because we're still not open yet. But we are on schedule, and we'll be reopening on May 1st. are on schedule and we'll be reopening on May 1st and I hope people will come and see everything, it's looking really good and we're very excited to welcome the community back in. And when that happens, we will reduce our hours at the branch again, back to, from seven days a week to five, Monday through Friday. And the other thing I passed is a draft of a postcard that's gonna go out to all residents in Altadena and that is about the June 10th grand reopening kickoff to summer reading and celebration for our 50th anniversary of the main building. We're calling that Growing Up Dina and we're gonna have a fantastic day with lots of live music, including the lead singer for Santana and his local band, Solaris, I think it's called, and Antics, a nationally-known breakdance group, and spoken word poetry, some science stuff, lots of fun things all day long. So that'll run from 10 to about 9:00 at night, lots of good food and drink, Rotary will be supplying lunch at 1967 prices. So that should be a lot of fun, too. And then the last thing that I handed out is something we're calling By the Numbers and this is sort of a very brief recap of the 24 conversations we held throughout Altadena and we're getting ready now to have a Town Hall meeting and I'm gonna let Brian talk about that.
I'm high-challenged as well. Good evening, my name is Brian Berry and I'm helping the library to put together this Community Conversations Project and I lived at 1673 Coolidge Avenue for about 10 years, although I don't live there now, I hope that still counts, at least, at least a little bit. But real quickly, because you've had a long meeting, what I wanted to talk about was the reason for the Town Hall. We went through two months of discussion with the community, we engaged over 200 people and so the first reason why we want to have the Town Hall is to explain what we heard, what we found, and I think for all of you it's going to be really, really fascinating because it'll echo some of the experience tonight, the participation tonight, I think some of the observations about neighbor-to-neighbor relationships, so a lot of that will be presented. The second reason why we're having the Town Hall is to do something that was mentioned earlier tonight and that's build community. So it's to bring people together, to help them to meet one another and to talk to each other and I, there was a comment about a dialogue. So having a, something that's a little bit more intimate than just a one-way conversation. Third reason is we'll be sharing information that we found, that we think is really, really important for, I know the chambers represented Altadena Heritage, MBBA, some of the other organizations, so they can utilize it. And the last reason why we're having the Town Hall is to make some recommendations for action so that people can feel like it's productive use of their time, they can leave there with a few steps to take so that they can help make Altadena an even better place to live. You heard tonight so many comments about why people love to live here and so our purpose is to try to help it to be an even slightly better place to live, especially for people who've been here for a long time. So thank you all very much, we're happy to answer any questions that you have about the Town Hall.
Okay, hang around for some questions from council. Go ahead.
I have a question, so what types of things do you, excuse me, what types of things do you feel that you will come out of this with being able to improve Altadena and is, are you working closely with the county?
Well, we're not, at this point, working closely with the county, but after watching tonight...
Yeah, I'm just saying to you that the county came and did a visioning document, Mindy's well aware of that, right? And that gets thrown, that was a county effort.
Right.
And the county didn't, we use it as a reference for things that the people wanted, but no, but everybody thought it was gonna be this big vision document for all of Altadena that was gonna make it, you know, shangri-la here and it won't and it will never be, so I'm just encouraging you guys to find a home with the county that you can work with because if you promise, this is, if you promise, they will come and then you'll be sad when you can't deliver.
No, we aren't, first thing is, we aren't making any promises.
Okay, that's a good thing.
The, the action is really all of you, but we'll tell you how it could be done, possibly. The second part is, we've, we've read through the document and there are some differences between the report we're going to provide and the county's. So there are a couple of areas that are different, for example, but then there are also some mechanisms within the county's process. It was, from what I've understood from the document, it's just, this is what we found and good, good luck, but we have a, we have some specific recommendations for action.
Okay, I would encourage you to hook up with the county, I know Mindy's in touch with the supervisor's office, but I think that it's, it will behoove you in the end, you guys, to really work closely with them and, and they'll be more than happy to help with whatever they can and give you ideas about, yes, we can do this, no, we can't, kind of thing, and, or, or we can do this with some, you know, extra funding or we can do this with, you know, whatever. I'm just trying to keep you out of the muck and mire.
Yeah, that's a great suggestion and Mindy's already met with Suzy Niebuhr, so...
Yeah, okay, she needs that a little lower for you, for her.
Just so you know, of course, we invited all the local officials, including all of you and Portantino and every, everyone's invited to this event and we've told them all along we would provide them with the document, but some of the, I'll just give you an example of some, one thing that really has nothing to do with the county and going through their processes, it's a local initiative. This is actually something the library's already working on because we already knew about this and then, of course, it came up in all 24 conversations and that was the lack of one method of communicating or any way to actually communicate in Altadena because we don't have a newspaper. So one thing we're gonna try, it will only be as successful as the community, and that is a community calendar that the library will be putting out, that anybody can post to as long as it's an event in Altadena. It could be a garage sale, it could be church, it could be school, it could be your meetings, but it will only be as successful as the people using it. So it's just something we're gonna give it a try because we heard that over and over again.
Yeah, that sounds good, yeah, that sounds good. You're right, if you don't need the county to help you, then you're in better shape. Yeah, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, you know, okay.
All right. Okay, any further questions for Mindy? Thank you so much, Mindy.
Well, we hope we'll see you all at the grand reopening on June 10th.
Thank you. LA County Department of Parks and Rec.
Hello, I'll be very brief, my name is Jason Hauser with LA County Parks and Recreation. I am the park supervisor at Farnsworth Park and I'm just gonna give you some information coming up. Let me start with Loma Alta Park very quickly here, if you're interested in the adult basketball leagues, we have those right now on Thursday night and you can contact them for more information at 626-398-5451. Loma Alta Park also has basketball training clinics on Mondays and Sundays, Mondays from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM and on Sundays from 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM. But what I really wanted to cover for all the parks very quickly, if you have children, this is the time to register them for summer camp because all the parks, specifically Loma Alta Park, Charles White Park and Farnsworth Park get filled up very quickly. So right now, there's ongoing registration at Loma Alta Park and Charles White Park. They have an early bird special at Charles White Park. If you register right now before June 1st, your fee is $20, after June 1st is 25. And at Loma Alta Park, if you register right now before June 1st, your fee is $75, afterwards your fee is $85. So I would suggest going to the park to register and also at Farnsworth Park, the, the park that I supervise, it's just a straight fee of $75 and we will begin registration next Monday, which is April 24th. Yes, so those, those fees, those prices are for one week and it includes the field trip. So, what's that, I'm sorry. I would say at the, that, this, they don't have one, but I would say to just speak to the supervisor at the park and then they can speak to their upper management and then, you know, I would say to take that avenue in regards to that.
Okay, are you done with your report?
Yes, I am, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, go ahead, yes, yes, that's what I'm saying.
Are there minimums of weeks to buy for the summer camp?
It varies, that's the one thing that varies from park to park. So again, I would say to check with the supervisor at the immediate park if you'd like to go to.
Do you have to call or is it online where someone can just go on and look, free to the parks?
Right now, it is, you have to go to the parks. They are starting online on, I believe it's May 1st for Loma Alta Park. And I wish I had the exact link to go to, but I think if you, I don't want to give misinformation, but yeah, Loma Alta Park would be the one, the pilot, so to speak, we're starting with that, okay? Yeah, Ms. Penny, so you can call Loma Alta Park at 626-398-5451 to get that exact link where you could go online to, to register online beginning of May.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council?
Moving on.
I'm sorry.
I was just asking if there's any other question from council. Okay, thank you so much. All right, Chamber of Commerce, Councilmember Malone.
I'd like to encourage people, again, we've heard it several times this evening, to go to the Community Conversation on the 27th that Mindy was discussing. The chamber will be there with a table. She touched on something that is very missing and lacking in our community and that is we do not have media. We don't have the Pasadena Star News, we, we don't have any of the media. So everything that goes out, like, goes by word of mouth or Facebook page and as we know, Facebook page to Facebook page is opposed by...
Nextdoor.
Nextdoor is good, Nextdoor is a good one, but we don't, other than that, so go on the 27th, get your, find out what's going on, find out between the, between the groups and the communities and what's offered. So I encourage that, we have, we're gonna be giving out four scholarships this year, two with quality of life, two with access to college, they're gonna be coming up and the students will be identified within the next month or two and we'll be presenting those. We have been working recently, I don't know if you heard in the news, of the new parking lot going on, Mariposa, we worked very strongly with the merchants along that street who desperately need parking, not just there, but it's, it's a first step to helping that business community in the commercial district without imposing, taking parking away from the residential areas around there. So we're continuing with that, continuing to work with those merchants. Last year, we were doing movies in the park, we partnered with the parks, we were doing them on the west side, we're gonna be continuing that, we were gonna do one for Easter, but daylight didn't give us the light we needed or the dark we needed for the age of the kids. So when the, when the market changes their hours, we'll be looking at doing that again probably sometime in the summer. And that's just a short update.
Okay, so...
No idea.
Okay. All right, you done?
Yes.
Any questions for Councilmember Malone?
Oh, we have one new director, Rebecca Rasmussen, and we have four new members this month.
Okay.
Okay.
Collaborate Pasadena Councilmember Sanika.
Sanika. Fairly quick meeting, I guess you could say. The meeting was held on, the meeting was held on March the 22nd at the Flint Ridge Center. The meeting was called to order by the new director, Lisa Cavaliere. We learned about recent workshop activities and her outreach efforts. There was a community listening session last Monday, the 10th, and she just brought some information to us about that. We gained a better understanding of the purpose of the Leadership Council and its relationship to the work groups. We discussed input received on the various population groups that we're trying to target. We reviewed the budget and the meeting was adjourned at about 7:30 and I look forward to next month's meeting.
Thank you so much. 41st Assembly, Councilmember Matthews.
Okay, I just want to list a few of the, of the bills that were passed for the first committee hearings in Sacramento and I'm then gonna refer the community to the site to, to look at all of the bills that have been passed. The first one here, and this was as of April, so I'm giving you basically a brief month's report, was Assemblymember Chris Holden's bill to empower families with developmental services needs that was passed on the, on the 4th. We also have the California State Assembly passes resolution regarding the legacy of Jackie Robinson, I think that was on the news recently, that is another one that was passed. Then there's also the teacher tax credit bill passed Revenue and Taxation Committee. Legislation was 100-year anniversary. Route 66 passes first policy committee. I would like to refer council and the community to the following website to review these, these, these bills that are passed and read them more in depth. You would go to HTTPS backslash, backslash, A41 dot ASMDC dot org backslash legislation. Assemblyman Holden has not yet decided when he will have the state of the district of representation, but once he does, I will notify council and the community and that's it.
Thank you so much. Moving, any questions for Councilmember Matthews? Okay, Census Track, 7.1, Census Track 460301.
So me and Judy Matthews represent northeast Altadena, northwest, sorry. I moved. Northwest Altadena, wow, yikes. Anyway, we represent northwest Altadena and I live on Glen Rose Avenue and on Glen Rose, the neighbors have complained to me about different things in terms of the speeding of cars going up and down Glen Rose. At 7:00 AM on this Thursday, Public Works, somebody from Public Works is coming and we're having a neighborhood meeting with them with respect to the possibility of putting in speed bumps or something to slow down that particular traffic. So if you live on Glen Rose, join us, it'd be right there by my house on the corner of Glen Rose and Pine. If you don't live on Glen Rose, I encourage you to meet with your Census Track representatives if you have any issues of traffic and things of that nature. No donuts, no, it's all, this is all volunteer because you are concerned about your community.
Okay, thank you. 4602?
Yes, I just want to make an announcement, the Pasadena Unified School District has all of its schools classified in three tiers. The top tier is excelling, the middle is achieving and then the bottom tier was focused, which just implies that the schools that are in that bottom tier need more focused attention. So there were five schools in that bottom tier and three of those schools were in Altadena. So we had a volunteer recruitment drive... So um we had a um volunteer recruitment drive and we recruited uh volunteers for the reading program at the two elementary schools, there were two elementary schools and then one middle school. And so the two elementary schools are doing well now, but we're focusing in on the um the middle school, which is Elliott Middle School. And um we're trying to get Elliott to adopt the Club Aspire. They have a reading program, they also focus on math, computer literacy, and other literacy-type activities. But that activity, that um program costs twenty-five dollars per child per semester. So the students, the principal, I've been meeting with the principal and the students, and they have decided to have a fundraiser. And the fundraiser is going to be to, this is to raise money so that they can get this reading program so they can get out of the focus group and elevate it into the achieving category at least. So they're doing this fundraiser, it's um High School Musical, and I'll pass these around. High School Musical is gonna be on May the eighteenth and nineteenth at six-thirty. One for you. The tickets are five dollars and for adults and six and three dollars for children. And so we're inviting everyone to um participate and try to um help these young people get a reading program, uh an after-school reading program established at Elliott. This is gonna help them with their reading, with their literacy, and hopefully, our goal is hopefully that once they go through this program, they will um, when they retest them again, they'll be out of that focus group and more into the achieving. And then we wanna take them all the way up to excelling, you know, like all the other schools. But um when we heard of that, um it was like five schools in focus and three in Altadena, that could never, that just could never happen. So we're, we've got the two elementary schools, it was Jackson Elementary and Altadena. And they're doing pretty well with the reading partners group, so we're focusing now on Elliott, that's our last group. And hopefully they'll raise enough money to um be able to participate in um Club Aspire.
Perfect.
The the board will probably match, and we're also trying to, I'm working with my counterpart part, we're trying to get some of the businesses to businesses to sponsor a child.
Thank you so much, um forty-six ten, uh Councilmember De La Torre.
Thank you, uh Cory, um so for those who are on Nextdoor, you may have seen my post about this getting the sidewalk on the corner of Windsor and what is it, Mountain View or Ventura, I believe, near the JPL Trail. So I'm currently working on that, so that's an update on that, but uh the reason I wanted to make an announcement today is um the Day One organization here in Pasadena is hosting a first annual space race here at the Hahamanga Watershed. It's gonna be a five K, ten K, um the whole thing is to promote, so not only do they service Pasadena, Altadena, but other cities as well, but um it's supposed to promote health and wellness. Uh they are, it costs forty dollars, if but if you don't want, it's on June tenth. If you don't wanna run it, uh they are also holding sponsorships or scholarships, I guess, for other local area schools. So you can also do that as well if you prefer. Um if you own a business or you know of a business who may want to provide scholarships or sponsorships, uh you can contact them as well. Um full disclosure, I used to go to that program and my wife currently works there, but it's a great program and they 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 pour a lot of money into PUSD in terms of nutrition, education, um community advocacy, stuff like that, so I would encourage you all to do that. Uh the website for the to we- to register for the run for yourself or for your children is uh spacerracetrun.com. If you have any more, oh, and then there's a five-dollar discount code for right now that you put in wellness. Uh but if you have any um questions about the scholarship or sponsoring a a student, uh contact um Jasmine, J A Z M I N E at GoDayOne.org and she can give you more information about that as well, thank you.
Thank you so much, uh public, general public comment. Uh let's start with uh Steve Lamb. We give you ten seconds, other people, everybody else gets two minutes.
Hilarious. Um you know, half a lifetime ago, and it's amazing to think that it was half a lifetime ago, but half a lifetime ago, I was on the town council for the first time. And this town council is very frustrating for me and most of the community to interface with and to deal with. And I've been thinking about that as I've been sitting here and I've been thinking, you know, I was very lucky. I had the founders of the town council as my mentors, Dewey Merrill, Frank Bridle, Oscar Werner, um Hugh McKenzie, who's who's can, we still pass around, that can's forty years old, it's an old friend. Um but you know, the way the town council used to function is when we had an issue, everybody went and walked flyers in their census tract. And we went out of our own pocket. And way, way back in the days before we had computers to print them and make them look nice, we hand lettered them and some of us even, well, Oscar, for example, ran his off on a Gestetner, that's how long ago it was. But the town council actually had contact with the citizens on important issues. And they didn't go through Nextdoor, and they didn't cry about the fact that they didn't have a budget, and they didn't whine that the Star News wouldn't cover them, and they didn't cry about the fact that they were volunteers, they manned up, and they did the job they volunteered for. And the reason why you have so much frustration now and why this community has so much frustration with you is you're not manning up and you're not doing the job you volunteered for, and if you do it, things in town will go a lot better. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Okay, next one will be Donald Alonso and Kevin Van. I'm sorry, I can't. Oh. Never mind, uh that was on the uh CSD. Uh Andrea.
That's contacted.
That spoke about the uh.
That's that's actually. Okay. All right, that one is done, five oh-one, Michelle Zach.
Good evening, council and uh community that's still left here. Um I think the, I I wanted to talk just for a quick moment about the uh project that some of you might have noticed, Altadena Triangle Park. I've already been here to the council once, but uh I don't know if everyone in the community has noticed that there's a construction fence now around the uh the the park. And the story behind that is about three or four years ago, uh Susie Niemer approached Altadena Heritage and asked us if we could, would wanna get involved in a project and apply for Prop-A funds to make that park usable because right now it's just like that and it's a underutilized space that has the potential to be our town triangle. Uh because it's so close, it's right in the core. So at the time, it seemed like too much for us, because we're all volunteers, nonprofit, but we since teamed up with Amigos de los Rios, they have a lot of experience in doing parks, uh called the Emerald Necklace, they all sorts of little spaces all over, like the San Gabriel Water River Shed, just leftover spaces. So anyhow, the long story short, we got a grant, we've been moving forward, um but and we had a budget that was gonna be, was working for us, but then once we started to get into the project, a lot of extra expenses came up for things that we couldn't have foreseen. For instance, once, you know, like with the electrical, we found out that the electrical in the park was not um up to standard. So once we've touched the park, it becomes our responsibility to fix the electric. So that's like seventeen thousand extra. Um it, once we touched the park, it became our responsibility to fix all the handicap ramps. Uh that's, I think, about another ten thousand. Anyhow, the good news is that we've been um collecting money, we have now raised fifteen thousand dollars. Altadena Heritage kicked in five to get things rolling, but uh we've had a lot of wonderful participation from Altadena Heritage members, from businesses. Steve of Steve uh is is making bike racks for us, uh the Waldorf School, Saint Mark's, Aldi. Um and I've gone out and talked to, um you know, asking all of the different groups, for instance, um this group. And I hope that you will vote to support us and the chamber and and all of, you know, many other groups. People are coming together and we do have pretty much of a uh commitment that the county is also gonna give us some more money. But they wanna see us reaching out and having broad participation, so I wanna invite everyone in the community who would like to pitch in, you can go to the Amigos de los Rios website and there's a a little, uh on the top right, it says Altadena Triangle donations. And that, you know, we can all make it our park by, you know, contributing and and doing our bit to to make it as it seems that Altadena is a kind of a do-it-yourself sort of place and we all have to be prepared to uh put our money where our mouth is and to volunteer in our efforts. So thank you very much.
Thank you, and by the way, you came in after I had made my report indicating that the town council supports the Altadena Triangle.
Thank you very much, is that five hundred or how much did you decide?
Yes.
Well, that, we're we're almost up to sixteen thousand because I got just another check today for five hundred from a, just a citizen who wants to um to be a part of this.
Okay. Okay, thank.
All the businesses in town uh for to request donations for, so that went out, yes, last night.
Okay, Mr. Edgar.
Yeah, just a quick one, Dee, I don't know if you discussed this in the past or not, but uh you know, recently marijuana was passed in California and now uh the dispensaries, medical dispensaries are available, and I guess I believe the first of the year uh general dispensaries will be uh issued in LA County. And I would, I just wondered, has the council made a position on this or have you talked with the county on the number of dispensaries that are planned for Altadena? Have you talked about the location where they're gonna be?
The answer is that the county, right now, their position is that they they do not support marijuana um facilities in the county. So we've had a number of them that the sheriffs have been working to get rid of. Um we've had terrible problems with them in the neighborhoods, quite frankly. Um with uh people, you know, wittering and doing a bunch of other stuff, the neighbors have been very upset. So the county does not support, there's no plan for medical marijuana in Altadena. The county does, the supervisors, you can go talk to the supervisors, that's really.
Have they made a law that says there is not going to be any?
I believe they ha- well, I believe they have, that's uh wrote on it again. And say what, and still say no, yeah.
It's still no, okay, 'cause Pasadena was going through this same thing.
Catherine Barker, talk to Catherine Barker.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, good, so it's a no.
It's not us to take a position, but yes, the county, the supervisors take, say no.
Well, I I just wanna say that I have a specific, in my business, right?
Right.
And I went over, I have, I only, I've only received two verbal concerns. So I went over to the sheriff's station and I spoke with them and they said, there's nothing that I can do about it. There's nothing you can do about it, you guys voted for it.
That's not true. If there, if if then you talk to the wrong person and please let me know and I'll make sure that we get the right answer for you, that's not. We didn't vote for anything, so let's, yeah, don't, the sheriffs should not be saying that to you.
Okay.
I went in and that's when I talked face-to-face.
To maybe the wrong, maybe the wrong person.
Excuse me, uh Officer Octave is involved, do you have to speak with him?
If uh the, I spoke with the officer.
It's not officer, it's lieutenant, Lieutenant Octave.
Lieutenant, you can speak with him.
Right, lieutenant, you need to talk to a lieutenant or above, a lieutenant or a captain, okay, yeah.
So is the position of the council that
We follow county.
You reject any dispensaries in Altadena?
We follow the count, we we don't have the authority to make any decision.
I know you don't have the authority, but you can make a recommendation.
We've never had any, we've not had any community, community members come and talk to Catherine about what Catherine Barker, Supervisor Barker, about the position of the of the supervisors. You have to go talk to her.
So you don't know?
They they.
I do know, the council, the supervisors have said no.
Yeah.
The town council, here's your answer, the town council does not have a position on that. The was, we are relying on the position of the county.
The supervisor. Well, if 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 anybody in the county.
Yes, yes, we we can work it in, when you come like you just did en masse and
To the county, to the to the supervisor.
I I think when you come en masse and if that's the, you know, the what Altidians wants to raise, okay, with the proper, um I say footwork, then that will be presented as a position to the town council. And then town council can take it further to the county.
We don't take a position though, Cory, what we do.
I I didn't say, I didn't say we take a position, what I, this is, this is what, this is the way that it ought to work. The community will come up with concerns, governize the community, present to the town council, or if the community so desire, can go straight to the county. But if you come to the town council, we have a little bit, regardless of whether you think we have any powers or not, we have a little higher uh position to be able to get hopefully to the county. That's what we asking you to do, bring it up, but make sure that you have everything together, not having us to go walk as uh Mr. Lamb said, we have to go do all this, all this work. We still need the community to be in support, to get it done so that we can get to the county. We will pass on the information and that, and that's what we, that's what, in essence, what we're supposed to be doing, and that's what we're going to do.
If we get.
But we need the community to come give that to us.
If we get onesie-twosie requests, we'll send them down to the the county and the county will respond back to you and the county will say, I think that the supervisors have voted, you know, not to support those at this time. What you, what you need to do is you get, you've done it with census and hedges, get a bunch, a bunch of people together who are all willing to have it in their census tract, by the way, because it's not okay to, it's not okay to say we want a bunch of medical marijuana stores and have it all in somebody else's neighborhood.
Yeah, but I don't, I'm not sure I understand what you said, you said the county doesn't support it, I don't know what that means.
The county has, the county voted that they don't allow medical marijuana dispensaries in unincorporated areas.
Okay. Okay.
And the only thing that they can do, and they have done before, is they they work with the the owner of the building or they get the sheriffs to go in and they do all, they do all kinds of violation things. And quite frankly, they get the people to move out and then another dispensary moves in right away behind them or the same people come in with a new doc, a new job because, or new name because the owner of the building wants the dispensary to be in there. And so, in fact, there are dispensaries and they're causing a bit of a problem in the in the community, but because it's only complaint-driven, they can be in there for, they can be in there for as long as they can be in there until somebody gets mad because they're they're being a nuisance.
Okay, thank you so much, I I think, I think at this point, this has go- gone on too long.
Well, I'm just telling, get in touch with your census tract.
Thank you for coming and uh I I'll be in the back or other people if you still need additional information, so uh okay, I I think that's the last thing that we have, so.
I move that we adjourn.
Thank you.
Second, okay, properly move, midnight joint, what time is it?
It's two o'clock in the morning. And the clipper is one. And the clipper is one.